Okay, everybody, let's start our meeting. Since today is Flag Day, please join me in honoring our flag with the Pledge of Legions. Well, welcome, everybody. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill Della Penya.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Engler.
Here.
I don't believe we have any continuance. People want to continue anything, I don't believe. But what I would like to do is maybe move Item 11A forward in the agenda to be heard just after the consent calendar, so that we can let those people go home. So without any objection, I think we'll do that. Well, very good. We do have a couple of special presentations tonight. First, I would like to share that the month of June is LGBTQ+ Pride Month, and this month marks the anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in June of 1969 back in New York City. And it changed the nature and activism of LGBTQ+ activities throughout the country. While this month aims to celebrate pride around the world and recognizes the impact that LGBTQ+ individuals have made in history, it also serves as a time to remember and honor those members of the community who have been taken by hate crimes or by HIV/AIDS. This month, we also have, just in five days now, just we have Juneteenth, which is recognized every year on June 19th and commemorates the ending of slavery in the United States. It is recognized on June 19th because that is when the Emancipation Proclamation finally reached the enslaved people down in Galveston, Texas. Juneteenth celebrates African-American contributions and achievements while encouraging cultural humility and understanding of all cultures. And for those seeking further information, I would encourage you to go down to the library. They have a curated collection of materials for all ages to learn more about Pride Month and what Juneteenth means. So I will move down to the podium here, just one second. I have a proclamation also to make to another group, so when I get over there, we'll announce that. Over the past several weeks now, our nation has experienced multiple tragedies at the hands of somebody with a gun. While June is being National Gun Safety Awareness Month, we are pleased to present this proclamation to the Ventura County Brady United. Here to accept on behalf of the organization is Betty M. Pol, co-chapter president of Brady United, and Molly Salmon, lead organizer for the 9th, June 11th Ventura County March for Our Lives to talk about National Gun Safety Awareness Month and what Brady United is working on. So if those two fine ladies can join me down here at the podium. I'll just present this, rather than read all the whys and wherethes and everything that everybody is happy I don't read. But let us be mindful of the effect that violence in general has in our country, but especially violence at the hands of guns. So please, let me give this over to you, and if you would like to say a few words.
Thank you so much to the Thousand Oaks City Council for recognizing the importance of this month and all the work that we're doing at Brady United Against Gun Violence. This is the time in America when we finally have a chance to maybe do something, and unfortunately, it's at the cost of so many lives, including what happened in our own backyard just a few blocks from here. And we need to stop and realize that this is an epidemic in this country. So I appreciate on behalf of everyone who is working, not just me, but everyone who is working on gun violence prevention, not only in this county, not only in this state, but in the country, to make us have a safer and more sane community. So thank you all. And I'd like to introduce Molly Salmon, who just came to us all of a sudden, a couple of weeks ago, she appeared, and she did a fabulous job on Saturday with the March for Our Lives.
Hello. I'm really honored to be here tonight, speaking to you. And I'm a mother from here in Thousand Oaks, and I have two children at Meats Elementary School. And when the shootings happened in Uvalde, I was just horrified, as I'm sure everybody was. And I was, more than that, just very, very angry that no action had been taken nationally to protect our children. And so I signed up to host a march in Thousand Oaks, and luckily, met some very wonderful people who helped me get the word out and organize. The march we had on June 11th last Saturday, we marched from the Westlake Promenade down to the Civic Plaza, down the park over here. And it was a really, really great event. We had over 300 participants, and the response we got from the public, you know, the passersby, the drivers, was very positive. And it gives me hopeful. It makes me hopeful that we can make some change in this country and really protect So thank you very much for engaging with us on gun violence prevention, and I hope this conversation continues not only in our community, but across the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming in. We are now open for public comments, so Ms. Rodriguez, can you please read the description?
This is the time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Nine individuals have requested to speak. In pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes, and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. So we have some public speakers. We have Lori Camille on our video, so if we can get her fired up here. Very good, I see you. Lori, please go ahead.
Hello, hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you so much, and I really appreciate you acknowledging Pride Month. That means a lot to me. Thank you so much. I am here today because I am very concerned about carbon emissions and in the greenhouse gas and climate change, as we're seeing in our temperatures and the droughts. I'm a resident of Hidden Canyon, located at Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Via Colinas. And despite the city's commitment to sustainability with the Climate Environmental Action Plan, which is being developed, my community has removed about 20 trees, mature trees, this year. And I spoke with the Tree Company Project Manager of Golden Oaks, and the plan, I don't know when, but the plan is to remove approximately 450 mature trees. I'm very concerned that we need to educate the public that trees are part of lowering our temperatures, and trees can help with droughts, trees can help with energy conservation and keeping temperatures down. So I just wanted to hear from the city and make sure we're all on the same page, that tree removal needs to be done very, very carefully and cautiously, and every tree is a life and is very important. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Carol Shelton, also on video. Ms. Shelton.
Good evening. My name is Carol Shelton. My pronouns are she/her/they/they. I live in Thousand Oaks. I've spoken to the city council on many occasions for Thrive Conejo, Adelante Comunidad Conejo, and Conejo Nido, mostly on topics of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Tonight, I'm just a mom. I have two boys with developmental disabilities, or ADD, that will need long-term extremely low-income housing. The likelihood of them receiving this type of housing while I'm still here to set them up for success from current resources is almost zero. There are more families like mine here in Thousand Oaks. I have some data. In the following ZIP codes, 91320, 91360, 91361, and 91362, there are a total of 513 adults served by a local regional center. Only 95 adults live independently. This does not include the 0- to 18-year-olds. The combined total is closer to 1,200. I watched most of the last two Planning Commission meetings about the Kmart site and the Baxter site, and heard repeatedly how the developers listened to and acted on comments by the Commission, the city council, and the community. Kudos to the Baxter developer for not requesting a density bonus. While low-income housing was discussed, there was no mention of folks with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Unless folks with ADD are intentionally included in plans, they become the last to receive benefit, if ever. Now I'd like to talk about the Baxter site and its potential. The Baxter site will have extremely low-income units. The site is perfect for those with ADD seeking to live independently in a home of their own. It will be walkable, will have several employers nearby that actively employ folks with developmental disabilities. The site will be inclusive. So what do the folks in the ADD community want? We want some extremely low-income units and new construction as set-asides for those with ADD and in perpetuity. This can be done, and it has been done. In an ideal world, all the units would have a bedroom which will allow for restful sleep of the tenant while their support staff is present. I'm asking that the needs of those with ADD are considered, discussed, and requested. Developers are listening. Please make independent living in Thousand Oaks a reality for families like mine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Shelton. Next up, we have Rodrigo Salazar, followed by Herman Castro.
Well, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, City Council, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Rodrigo Salazar, and I live in Twin Palms Mobile Home Park. I'm coming before you this evening to share information on our need to look against our ordinance for rent control for mobile home parks. The last time we looked at the ordinance, we were all here trying to explain the concern. We had to increase the ordinance to 100% of CPI, Consumer Price Index. I believe you were not aware of the effect that the increase of 100% of CPI on homeowners in the parks here in the city of Thousand Oaks. Unfortunately, we didn't have enough time to bring more information to you that time. CPI was heading upward at the time we were here, just in front of you, which was and keeps going up. It's very high. I believe that the homeowners are not able to afford the 10% to 15% increase each year without losing income on the value of our homes. And then I will ask if in between now and the next city council meeting, our representatives will be working to set up a meeting with someone, a few, to discuss this concern. We are asking that this ordinance issue be put on the council's agenda at a future date, if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Herman Castro.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpersons. My name is Herman Castro. I represent my mother, who lives in Twin Palms Mobile Home Parks. And I come to here because I'm trying to get into with the organization, with their residents there, and with my mom, to see if we can get to the agreement that the city has with the owner of the park, to be able to review it instead of using the 100% of the CPI that's going to be allowed. It used to be 2%, and that expired two years ago, between the city and the owner. That was their agreement. Instead of be 100%, maybe we can reduce it for them, for those people who lives in the mobile home, to see if can be reduced 50% or 75% or something in between, because it impacts them heavily in their pocketbook and how much they pay in rent. Majority of them are living fixed income, and 5%, 10% is a lot to them impact in their budgets. So we're asking for you, councilmen, to see if we can review the agreement the city has with the owner of the park, and also if we can, some of our residents there, meet with one of you, the councilperson, to take some action for the future or the next year or two that's coming up. So that's all we're asking from you guys. Appreciate your time. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Looks like next up, we have Reverend Jill Martinez.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak. I am Reverend Jill Martinez, a retired Presbyterian minister, and I represent the Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League. And we were here before you some time ago, and we were able to communicate some of our concerns, but not all of them. Since we were here and you approved 100% CPI, at the time, the argument was made 2%, 2%. Well, now you know CPI has gone up 40%, and it will go up higher. We'll quickly get to 14%, and we knew that was going to happen, but we needed the opportunity to talk with you more. There's a lot of very frightened people in the city. We're here with Twin Palms, but also Vallacito is watching, and so is Thunderburg Parks. And our concern also with GSMOL and these groups was looking at the park closure ordinance that you have. And that has changed somewhat. It doesn't have the opportunities for homeowners that it used to have in it. So we really need a serious look at that park closure. People are afraid that they'll just be given $40,000 or whatever for a $200,000 home and lose all the equity that they have and have no place to go. Preserving affordable housing is so important, and we need to, again, look at that. I appreciate the time we had before when you identified some of our problems with pass-throughs and what kind of guidelines we would use for that. I really do believe that you understood the burden on these families to increase rents like that with fixed incomes. They just cannot make it. And I am from Ventura, and so I'm just here to walk them through this process and work with you. And hopefully, you'll be able to meet with a number of them that are here tonight, and I will be there alongside, helping any way I can. But please reconsider that 100% of CPI. Many jurisdictions cap it at 5%, and others are at 50% or 75%. The county does COLA, so COLA, you know, that stays real small. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Jeanette Sanchez.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and city staff. My name is Jeanette Sanchez Palacios, and I am the district director for Assemblymember Jackie Irwin. And I'm here tonight just to share with you about our drought event that is happening in this city in collaboration with the city of Thousand Oaks on July 9, which is a Saturday, from 10:00 to 1:00. And I do have a flyer that I wanted to... TOTV, can you show the flyer, please? Yeah, wanted just to share the flyer and information with residents here as well as council. Everyone is invited. We are, this will be our first event since, our first large event in the public since the pandemic, and we find it to be a very opportune time. As many cities as yourselves have declared certain levels of water conservation measures. And so we hope that this will be a resourceful event for the residents who are serviced by various water districts, and each water district is doing a little bit, something different. So we want to take the opportunity to provide some workshops, one of them being the Drought 411, which is where Assemblymember Irwin will be hosting an informative discussion with local water agencies, the Park District, Ventura County Fire. And this will all be regarding, again, water conservation restrictions, future plans, and how we plan to, as a community, to prepare ourselves for the drought. We'll have other workshops throughout the day as well, including we'll have emergency vehicles, we will have police units, kit fingerprinting, and information on all kinds of emergencies in the 805. And I think importantly to point out is that Ventura County Behavioral Health will be there with information about fentanyl safety and overdose kits, and also the Los Robles Regional Hospital will be doing blood pressure checks, and Ventura County EMS will be teaching hands-on CPR. And you'll be able to have free plants, native plants, thanks to the generosity of Growing Works Nursery as well. So as you can see, it's going to be a full day with a lot of information, and we invite you all to join us, and hopefully, the community can be there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Bob Maron.
Good evening. My comments are in relation to the information I learned from the Acorn on the Senate Bill 9. Truly, the people of Thousand Oaks have benefited from the city's 50-year plan, and our Thousand Oaks community works, and we're blessed to live here. I participated in and followed the public input meetings for the update of the 50-year plan, which the city appeared to listen to in the proposed new updated 50-year plan. I was pleased to see that the city and its leaders continued their commitment to proper and wise planning for Thousand Oaks' future, which included the state's increased growth requirements. But now I'm very confused by and disappointed by our city leaders, who seemingly are simply rolling over Senate Bill 9's power grab of dictating changes in the rules of subdivision. These changes contradict Thousand Oaks' updated 50-year plan, and I strongly agree with the statement of Ed Jones, who is quoted as saying, "I think it is a terribly flawed law, and I think it has potential of ruining some of our lovely neighborhoods." As a resident of Thousand Oaks, I expect my city leaders and the city to protect the local community planning and the very integrity of local government. And the city's response should certainly be much more than a letter to the governor. Really, that's the best you can do. I hope at least it was in caps. As a resident, I ask that the council and/or the city provide some clarification of the following. Why didn't the city join in the lawsuit with other cities against the Senate Bill 9? And why not do it now? What steps with some detail of the expectation of success are being taken by the city or contemplated by the city to avert or negate some of the terrible possibilities created by the Senate Bill 9? And thirdly, does the council and the city have the same concern that I think the residents have over the loss of local control by the state taking control of some of the planning for the city, and these decisions are being made 400 miles away from our city? I am strongly opposed to the idea that Thousand Oaks community planning can be easily discarded and replaced by dictates from the government, again, the state government over 400 miles away. I fully expect my local city leaders to share that view and show it by taking thoughtful and effective actions to protect the very integrity of our local planning and government. So I'd like to learn more about what is being done and what has been done and what is to be done to offset some of the negative impacts of Senate Bill 9. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Luis Avalos.
Good evening, and I want to take everybody, Mayor. And I want to take this opportunity also to thank Ms. DeLaPeña. I know that she helped us in the past, and I don't know what she stands right now, but I hope she still supports us. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Mobile Home Park, Twin Palms. And I didn't prepare anything eloquent or anything or statistics, but I'm going to speak from the heart. I turn around and I see a lot of these people, and I recognize them. I recognize them because they're my neighbors. They're not nameless, faceless people. They're human beings. And we're not just too many, maybe for the owner of the park, which is mobile home members. That's what we are. But no, we're not. We're individuals. And the reason I recognize them is because we live there, and we make a beautiful community. And I want to tell you also a little story. Back in 2004, this gentleman, he broke his two legs, and he couldn't work for two years. And the reason he had a home, it's because he could afford the little rent that he could pay. That person was me. If it wasn't because of the rent control that it was then, I wouldn't be able to support myself or my family. Also, the same guy, which is me, I have two beautiful girls, a 19-year-old and a 24-year-old. The 19-year-old, she started going to college, and the 24-year-old, she just finished her masters. You know why I did that? You know how I could have done that? Because I could put a little bit of money aside because of the rent control that was in place. You know what? Please, don't let it go any further. All these people here, most of them, they have fixed incomes. And we're so blessed to be in there, and we love that place, and that's a place we call our home. For some people, they just call it probably Twin Palms or Mobile Home Parks. To us, it's our home. So would you please stand and protect all of those that they need protection at this time? And I'm not saying that for the owner, this can be affordable, but we're just being hit so hard by a pandemic. We're all in the same boat. You got hit, I got hit, they got hit, everybody got hit. What would you want to shake us even more and take more from us? I just want to leave you with that. I don't know how much time I have left, but I just want to help, I just touch your hearts and put some sense into it. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, I have a speaker, first name only, John. Very good. All right, our last speaker right now is on Zoom, Travis Ravel. Travis, are you there? I don't see Travis anywhere, Madam Clerk.
Move to the next item.
Very good. If Travis comes back on, we'll see if we make room for him later. But for now, that closes our public speaking times. So Mr. Powers, if you would like to respond.
Sure. Thanks so much, Mayor Engler. I'm going to have City Attorney Noonan speak to our Mobile Home Park Rent Control Ordinance in just a moment. But in regards to the Hidden Canyon Trees question that was brought up, Hidden Canyon HOA is actively going through a landscape master plan update, and they're working through the city process there. They are removing quite a few pine trees, doing some revisions for fire protection, and our team is working very closely with them. They have a biologist on site monitoring wildlife and so on. So that is underway right now, but they are following the appropriate city process. And to the gentleman that spoke to SB 9, and just to be clear, I think it's unanimous across the board here from the council and city staff perspective, we fought hard against SB 9, as many jurisdictions did. The council's action within the last couple of meetings was simply, that is SB 9's law of the land in every jurisdiction in California. And what we brought to the council was an opportunity to provide as much restriction to SB 9 as we can possibly provide. Without that protection on steps taken by council, a developer could come in and do even more impactful things. And so that action was simply to provide as much local control as the law affords us to do. If we don't take that step, then it simply reverts to the state law, which gives maximum flexibility. So from that perspective, we took that action to do exactly what you said, which is to offset the impact of SB 9 as best we possibly can. And I'm going to have our community development director catch you in the hallway if you want to talk more about it. Kelvin Parker, he's right there by the door. You'll see him by the door there, just so you can get further answers to your questions. Hand it over to City Attorney Noonan.
Thank you. First, I want to say, you know, we're aware of and we empathize with those of you, those of us who are experiencing rent and housing burdens. I think everyone knows we have a housing crisis in the state. We have a housing crisis in our city. And those burdens, the rent burdens, are also exacerbating that housing crisis. The city, however, is also subject to limitations set forth in state law and in the California Constitution. Regardless of that, we will continue to advocate for a better and more equitable environment Constitution regarding land uses and private property rights. The city did adopt a mobile home rent control ordinance decades ago. It is the only form of rent control in the city of Thousand Oaks. So those who are renting apartments and houses are subject to market forces and state law. They do not benefit from any rent control in the city. It was in the mid-2000s, I can't remember the year offhand, but around the mid-2000s, the city actually negotiated a comprehensive rent schedule for all mobile home parks after several mobile home park owners actually submitted applications to significantly increase rental rates. We're talking, you know, 500% rent increases. But the city was able to mediate and get the mobile home park tenants and the mobile home park owners to agree to an actual rental rate schedule over a period of more than a decade. And that was a hu-- I don't think, you know, I don't think anyone can underestimate or undervalue the difficulty it was to do that. It was incredibly difficult. That, obviously, that term expired. And at that time, what the city council did was, the city council did not adopt any changes to its rent control ordinance. What happens is it just reverted back to the original rent control ordinance. So the mobile home parks, the units are still under rent control. The city did not impose any new or increased rental schedules. It is still subject to the original rent control ordinance. The difference is that you don't have a set rental schedule that was agreed to after a mediation. That's it.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Sure. Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to ask the city attorney, if you could just take a moment and describe the rent control ordinance, and is there a maximum that a landlord can increase the rent each year? And is it for a certain number of years, or is it indefinitely?
So obviously, I haven't read our Mobile Home Rent Control tonight, since this was public comment, and I can only briefly comment on it since it's not on the agenda. We do have a rent control ordinance that does establish a methodology for any rent increases that are being imposed on the users. We have staff that is in-house to ensure that any rent increases comply with our rent ordinance. But that's about as much as I can talk about tonight, since it's not on the agenda.
How would I pursue this further? Who would have--
We can talk offline about it.
Okay.
Let me, Mr. Powers would like to also comment on this item as well.
And just to wrap up, to meet residents' requests to sit down, have a conversation with city staff, Mr. Parker is over here as well, and would love to get whoever's your coordinator lined up with him. I'd be happy to sit down with our housing expert and walk through our current ordinance and all of those various components for you and listen to your concerns further.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. De La Peña.
Thank you. Whatever conversation will develop between the residents and staff, it's important to let the council know if, because I did hear tonight that there are other jurisdictions that don't have 100%, maybe there are other options. And we are in a housing crisis, obviously. We are fully aware of that. And also, in terms of needing to ensure that those who are, I mean, many are struggling. And it is important that we don't contribute to the homelessness crisis in California, and certainly not here in Thousand Oaks. We cannot afford for people to go homeless, to become homeless. I think it is, we have a responsibility to look at this further. Thank you.
Be happy to provide council a written update following conversation as to what transpired.
Just let me interject. I would agree with that.
We need to, it's not on the agenda. I'm sorry, Councilmember Jones, it's not on the agenda tonight. And so for us to continue discussing it as a Brown Act issue, I apologize, but it's not on the agenda.
Very good. If any other comments? Very good. With that, I think we have to move over to our consent calendar. Now, we do have three people speaking to us on consent, public speakers that I'd like to get to right away. I think we have David Peterson, followed by Kinsey Flame on video. So go ahead, Mr. Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Dave Peterson. I'm the general manager of Los Virginas Municipal Water District. I'm speaking in support of Consent Calendar Item 7J. That item is a memorandum of understanding on water resources development and collaboration. As we face the impacts of a statewide drought, it's become really clear to me that it's increasingly important that we work together and that we build our partnerships with neighboring agencies. This MOU does just that and strikes a partnership between the city, Los Virginas Municipal Water District, the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, Camrosa Water District, and our JPA partner, the Triumph Water and Sanitation District. I'm appreciative of the city staff's work on this, Cliff and Nader, and encourage your support and vote in favor of the item. We've structured the MOU to be very broad, so there's opportunity for partnership on many different items related to water, but we've actually specifically called out a couple that could be immediate opportunities, including treating impaired groundwater from your Los Robles well at our proposed pure water project that will be in the Los Virginas service area, potentially diverting dry weather urban runoff to assist with MS4 compliance, and also looking at regional brine management strategies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Next up, we have Kinsey Flame on video. Ms. Flame, I see you on our screen. Are you available? Perhaps we'll go on to our next speaker here, who's in-house, Mr. Chuck Leck.
Good afternoon, city council, and maybe it's good evening, also city staff. I'm Chuck Leck. I'm the Government Affairs Director for the Cano Simi Moore Park Association of Realtors. I'd like to speak about one of the consent items, which deals with your 2023 council goals. I'm actually here today to commend the city council for listening to the concerns of residents and responding to their concerns by including wildfire mitigation in your top 10 goals for the next year. We all value our open space, and we all want to protect it. And we all value our homes, and we need to protect them. And they are obviously all at risk when we have a wildfire. Our Realtor Association actually engaged a premier Washington DC-based polling company to conduct a local resident survey. It included 400 people to explore their concerns about wildfires, to make sure that we knew how important that they felt about them. Our surveys showed that 94% of our residents support targeted brush removal to restrict the spread of wildfires. We don't want to get rid of anything. We want the fire department to be able to say, "This is an area of concern, and we need to listen to them." We published the results of this polling in the Acorn. We prepared the full results and presented it to the Ventura County CEO and the fire chief, to your city council, to the Recreation and Park District, and to COSCA. Wildfires are a whole community problem, and we need all four of these government agencies to work together to be able to come to the table now. The wildfire mitigation really involves two major issues. One is individual homes must be wildfire-hardened to protect themselves against wildfires and have clear defensible space. Plus, we must prevent wildfires from getting out of control. Both need our attention. Our fire department and fire safe councils have already been working to provide the education, inspection, and guidance on home hardening to homeowners. All properties are affected. We are seeing insurance rates climb dramatically. We are seeing insurance companies say, "You have to go to the California Fair Plan," which is not a very good plan to have. We are very gratified to see leadership of Thousand Oaks City Council in making this a priority issue. The time to act is now. This is a great time to plan. We think that the planning should take place immediately. Usually, I'd say that we have to do something before the fire season begins, but it seems California fire season is now all 12 months. Please let us know if our association can be of any assistance. We represent 1,000 members just here in the Cano, and thank you for what you are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Leck. I'll try Kinsey Flame again. Kinsey, are you now online?
I am here.
Thank you, Kinsey. Nice to see you again. Please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city staff, and community. My husband and I raise our two children in Newbury Park, and although we live across the street from Earth, our children attend Banyan off of Lynn Road. For many years, our school district has given parents a choice, allowing them to choose what school fits their family's needs best, meaning that a portion of our parents are driving to school, and many schools like Banyan Cypress and Walnut in my area have a large majority that still walk to school as well. I'm sure, not sure if any of you have experienced an elementary drop-off recently, but I would absolutely compare it to anything and everything chaotic. I'm sure many parents could get up here and echo my opinions about school drop-off. You have one set of parents that are diligently following the rules while judging the other parents. Who could care less? The speed limit on Lynn to Banyan is 50 miles per hour. I've seen someone lose their life on Lynn Road in an accident, and it's not something that I would wish upon anyone. I firmly believe it's a dangerous road, and the speed limit is too high with so many blind corners. The past year, Banyan has not had a crossing guard, and we have had incidents where people have had to stop on Lynn Road to help students get across. The speed limit is too high, cars don't stop, and not having a crossing guard makes it dangerous for everyone. I have been here before to ask you to please look into lowering the speed limit, putting in more lights, or any way we can make it safer. I have seen someone lose their life. I've had three friends be T-boned. I've had a friend, I have a friend who doesn't let their children play in the front or backyard in fear of having a car end up there. And now we're discussing permanently taking away the crossing guards. Personally, even one child being hit by a car is too many. I have seen more than a dozen kids that drop off and pick up, crossing Lynn Road solo. Can city staff please explain how the city came to this decision? How many times does the recorder come out and check how many children are using the crosswalk? Is it multiple times on different days? Were there reports during COVID and when we had cohorts? What is the minimum number of children that need to cross the crosswalk in order for a crossing guard to be needed? I've read on some older documents, it's 500 cars and 20 pedestrians per hour during school drop-off. Is that still the case? This is the first normal school year we've had since 2019. I asked the city to look more into this prior to voting and discuss other avenues to continue having a crossing guard at these schools. One child getting hit by a car is just too many. And one last thing, it's not on the agenda, but the school board meeting is going on tonight, and these kind of things kind of go together. So for us community members that love our meetings and want to attend, if the city could please take a look at possibly not having school board meeting and city council meeting, because I am doing dual meetings today, and that would be super helpful. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Flame. That's all of our public speakers on our consent items. Council members, does there anybody want to pull any item?
Mayor, I'd like to pull C-E-K-O. That's Charlie Echo Kilo and Oscar.
C-E-K-O, got it. Any other items to pull? Very good. Then I think I can take a motion to please pass the--
Move the balance to the consent calendar.
Thank you.
What were the ones, again, we pulled?
Charlie Echo Kilo, Oscar.
C?
C-E-- K-- N-O.
What branch of the service were you in? I never heard those.
Very good. Then, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña. Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Mr. McNamie, you pulled some items?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Would you want me to talk about them individually? If anyone wants to comment about them, we can do that.
I think what we could do is go through each one.
Yes.
And we can vote on each one as we go through it, and then we'll get to the end.
C is an easy one. That was where you and I had the honor of working with the wonderful high school students here in the Cano Valley, applying for the youth commission. And I like to say it was a very difficult task for both the mayor and myself, Mayor, if I'm not speaking out of turn here. But we have some very talented students here who stepped up and want to serve on the youth commission. It was a pleasure meeting all of them, difficult decisions that he and I had to make, and just want to say thank you personally to each and every one of them through this forum. Mayor, anything else you want to add to that?
Actually, I had the opposite feel to it. I thought it was a very easy decision, because everyone there would have been a great addition to our commission.
But how could you decide between so many good opportunities? That's my challenge.
They were all such quality kids, and I appreciate them taking the time to step up and want to be part of what we're doing here in the city. So thank you to them, and thank you to you for the effort.
Very welcome.
Well, you know, you took away my partnership with Bob. You know, I used to do that.
Is there any other comments on that particular item?
One at a time, or do you want to move--
We need to move them one at a time. So would you like to move--
Like to move items? See if I may.
Very good, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
The next item you had down, Councilmember McNamie, was Echo E.
Echo, yes. Civic Arts Plaza Sewer Lift Station Maintenance.
Easy.
The question I have perhaps for, is Cliff Finley here, or are you stepping in for Mr. Finley?
I'm Liz Perez, the facilities manager, and I will be answering any questions you have.
My question is that our job as council is to find the greatest service at the lowest price, and I noticed that this is coming up for renewal at the end of this month. And I understand it's not gone out to competitive bid, which would, again, give us the greatest service at the lowest price. And this goes out to 2027, which is a pretty good length of time for such a contract. Why did it not go out to competitive bid, and what was the rationale for city staff?
Okay, thank you, Mr. McNamie, Councilmember McNamie. So this service has been provided since the Civic Arts Plaza was built by the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. The district, that is its sole purpose, is to service sanitary equipment, such as what we have here. So staff discussed with Public Works, did some research, and there really is not a local firm that does this type of service. It's not only maintenance, it's emergency service. What most people don't realize is the Civic Arts Plaza, all of it's sewer, runs downhill, and it runs below the sewer level at Thousand Oaks Boulevard, so we have a lift station. So if there was to be a sewer problem on a Friday night during a show, the whole thing would shut down. So what the sanitation district provides is the 24-hour service. They have the equipment, the staff, plus the ability to maintain it. So at this time, staff felt this was the prudent decision to make.
How do the prices compare to other vendors that are not in our city? Because I appreciate the convenience of having them here for immediate response time. Again, this begs the supply-demand curve of, well, you don't have much in the way of supplies, so demand changes here. What is the pricing compared to other cities if we had more competitors here in the city for this particular service?
Well, we didn't actually do the full process, but we couldn't find someone who does everything. So what you would end up doing would be contracting for sewer cleanup. You'd be contracting for maintenance. You'd be contracting and trying to find someone who-- You'd be contracting and trying to find someone who does 24-hour service, which we couldn't even find anyone within a reasonable amount of distance that could provide this service. Staff even considered that our own service yard would provide this, but even they said they couldn't do it as good as. And this is one of those services where you're not necessarily looking for the lowest price, but you're looking for the best service. So that went into the decision.
Excellent, thank you. Mayor? Yes, thank you. Any other comments?
I'll move E. Is it E?
It's E Echo, yes.
I'll move E-Z.
Very good. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Yes.
Councilmember Adam.
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Aye.
And Mayor Engler.
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Next item was K Kilo?
K Kilo, yes. Annual School Crossing Guard Program Review. As one of the comments, public comments from Kinsey Flame is very well stated and taken, in that the protection of the children as they cross the street to get to school is paramount, and a life is very, very valuable. My question to council and something we may want to take up next year is, this is more of a school board program, just like the school resource officers. I'm not clear that, why is it that school crossing guards and school resource officers are under the budget of City Council when in fact that's a school board matter? They should be the ones addressing this and deciding what their needs are, not City Council. So nothing that we're going to do today, because it's not on the agenda, I can hear our city attorney whispering in my ear, but it's one that, again, it is very clear to me that our budgets are very separate. School Board is one entity unto themselves. City Council is another entity, and perhaps next year we look at this to separate it out and pass it back over to School Board, where, in my opinion, that's where it should be. Thank you, Mayor.
May I comment on that, Mayor?
Please go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yes, I see Mr. Cohen in the audience. He will probably remember that we had the same discussion back 50 years ago, and our city manager then, Glenn Hindle, was not excited about paying for crossing guards. But we haggled with the school district, and finally we decided we would do it. If you, you know, I would have no problem if you want to bring it up again, but that was a decision we made many years ago. I have another comment on this. I guess school's out, is that right? Is there summer school at any of these schools, you know?
I'm unaware.
Well, if we were in session, for sure, and I knew it, I would ask to eliminate the closing, or the elimination, I would want to continue the crossing guard on Jan's Road at Marlowe. They just shoot through there, near the hospital. And also, the one on Lynn and Oldwood at Banyon School, they have a very high, as we heard, I guess from Ms. Flame, of speed there that the traffic operates at, if I can end the sentence with the preposition. So during the school year, I would ask to continue the crossing guards, both on Jan's Road and Lynn Roads. I'd hate to see a six-year-old try to cross Jan's Road by himself at Marlowe, and I think we've all been there. It's a very wide street, and they go fast, so I really think we ought to consider keeping those two on Lynn and Jan's.
So if I might, Mr. Mayor, we have our staff team here, and I don't know who was best to respond to that. You know, as a reminder, this annual report's provided because of council's policy, now that they established the criteria associated with maintaining crossing guards at these locations. We do fund these at roughly half a million dollars a year across the board. This criteria is established at a lower level than the state standard, but you can speak. I know we had a question from a public speaker about that. You know, we have to have some criteria to base this on, or else there would be expectations of crossing guards across the spectrum. So I don't know who's best to respond.
Yes, thank you, Drew. Yeah, just to echo your comments, obviously, safety is number one.
Introduce yourself, please, for the audience.
Yes, Nader Hidari, City Engineer. And following up on this item 7K, safety is obviously paramount in the city, and that's why the city has been funding this program, which is, you know, above and beyond what many cities do for the crossing guard program. However, as Drew mentioned, there are minimum standards that the City Council has established that need to be met in order for a location to be qualified for consideration for a crossing guard. And those standards that the City Council has established are much more generous than those statewide standards in the California MUTCD. So however, these five locations that are on the staff report tonight do not even meet those lower standards that the city has established in terms of number of pedestrian counts of crossing at those locations. So the, you know, the staff report contains that data. This is part of our annual crossing guard review, that we evaluate all the sites and ensure that, you know, crossing guards are in the correct locations, and they match up with the program requirements that the City Council has established. And we're available for any other questions.
Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Obviously, you follow formulas and data and all of that in order to make these decisions, and a certain threshold needs to be met. I understand that. I was just wondering, should the council approve the staff recommendation tonight? Can we keep an eye on those intersections or crossings that are really more high traffic, such as Jan's and Lynn Road, just to make sure that everything is going okay? If it's not going okay, we probably might want to revisit these two areas in particular and reinstate a crossing guard? I think we should moving, we should be moving forward cautiously.
Yes, absolutely, and that's part of our annual program review. We look at each campus, and in this case, that could be certainly considered. In fact, in Banyon, the principal had provided some communication that of a potential alternate site in a different location.
Good.
So that would be part of that analysis that we could do for the upcoming school year.
And how long would you wait? Would it be at the end of the first semester, or how would that work?
Those can vary. Our program manager, Mike Howser, might be able to clarify.
Yeah, we typically give about six weeks to eight weeks to get school and a routine established, but we could certainly do a count and analysis at that time.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. The great questions from council members here, Jones and Claudia De La Peña, actually prove my point that this is starting to sound like a school board meeting, and this should be put in the purview of School Board, and we'll bring it up next year and discuss whether or not it is appropriate to shift this back over to School Board, because they have better control to know when we're out of school, how many students at what institution, how many, at which crosswalks, what time of day. This is School Board stuff. This is not council stuff. So Mayor, back to you. I'd like to move if there's no other questions.
There are a couple other comments as well.
Okay.
Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. The Traffic Commission voted on this, did they not? And it was a 5-0 vote to go with this recommendation, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. April, we took this matter to the Traffic Commission.
All right. Well, here's the thing for me, and I know Ed has suggested maybe we stick with two and eliminate three or whatever, and I get that, but I just, I don't know the basis for doing that at this point. So what I would recommend is that we bring this back to us in a relatively short amount of time, so we can go over the criteria that's being used to determine whether or not these should continue to exist, and perhaps we could even discuss the financing as well. But at this point in the evening, I'm not prepared to say, yes, let's go with this one and that one, but eliminate this one and this one and that one. I think we need to review our standards, find out how this is determined, see if we want to change them or keep them, and maybe we could even look at the financing thing. Does that make sense, Ed?
Yeah, but I wish we would think of a date and actually put this on the calendar.
Sure.
So we do it, I presume, if there's no summer school.
Well, I think we have to do it, because it's saying here that we would eliminate these when, Drew? Oh, bring it back in the fall then, yeah.
Well, I think we should bring it back before school starts.
Okay, fine with me.
And I, you know, I would not vote for eliminating the crossing guards at Lynn and Jan's.
Right, and I personally don't feel I have enough information about how the system works to vote yea or nay on any one of these. So again, I would just like a review of the criteria, how we determine whether or not to continue with this, and as Kevin says, take a look at the financing, too. Why not?
Madam Clerk, a quick question from me on this. Can we continue this one item until sometime later, so that we can at least get the school kids taken care of going into the next year, and then we can revisit this?
Yeah, we can continue this item.
Probably the best would be for someone to make a motion to continue to a date uncertain, and in addition, bring this item in addition to additional information regarding the methodology and the threshold policies the City Council adopted.
I'll make that motion.
Because the concern that we would have is if we start picking and choosing which intersections were violating adopted threshold policies, and there might be other streets or other, you know, crosswalks, if you lower that, that would be entitled to crossing guards, too, and there's budgetary information. There's a whole bunch of other factors that would go into it.
Exactly, yeah, and that's why I would be afraid to start, as you say, picking and choosing here. Let's go, let's do what Tracy suggested.
Do we do a continuance?
Can I ask, before we jump into a continuance, here's my question. Again, we need to make the discussion of whether or not City Council should continue this as far as payment goes, and just shift this back over to School Board. Mr. Powers, can we move this to the next discussion we have before school starts, with the understanding that we may say at that point, this is now School Board responsibility, not City Council responsibility?
I could add that to my motion.
I don't believe we'd be able to do that, since we're on break when school comes back in, but we could probably address it shortly thereafter.
Let's ask Mr. Powers what his comment is.
Here's my recommendation to the council. I think we maintain, if the council chooses to put a motion to maintain, I think we will leave those sites. Mr. Finley, just looking for concurrence, we would leave those sites, and we would come back with a policy update likely in September, I think, is what the team's looking at. So nothing would change, remain status quo. Council will have an opportunity to revisit your adopted policy and determine if you want to make any changes to that. Certainly will be an opportunity if you want to talk about the financing mechanism. We're coming into a budget cycle next year. So that would be the time to have that. If the council chooses to direct at that point, there's conversations that need to occur with the district. We can do that coming out of that meeting.
What is our first meeting when we come back?
August 29th, I believe.
I move we continue this matter to August 29th.
There's more that needs to be added on that?
I think the need's to go a little bit further than that. Councilmember Jones.
Yeah, we have a motion. Yes.
We do have a motion on the floor, and it was from me, and I say that we do move it to, I don't know about the exact date, but to September. And we have to have a little latitude for staff to be able to put this thing together, and we review the methodology by which this is determined, and we look at the financing, both. And in the meantime, we keep the intersections guarded. That's the motion.
The, thank you for the motion. Any discussion on the motion other than what I'm going to say?
I call for the question.
I do have a question on the motion, however. The, the question really before us is, do we have, we have these five locations, and should we continue to operate them even though they're below our threshold, which is already a generous threshold? There's a portion of our motion that talks about our budget and where this money should be coming from. I would prefer that we continue these five locations until we can address it more in our budget time. It's not too far, too far into the future, and that is more an appropriate time if we're talking about moving our, having the school district involved. Cliff, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's okay. I just want to make a clarification comment. So the program, again, is spoken, this is a fairly robust program. We endeavor to employ 29 crossing guards. They go through a recruitment process through the city, and they're hired as part-time employees. Currently, we have been unable to get 29 crossing guards. In fact, two or three different times of the year of these intersections actually haven't had crossing guards. So with your direction tonight, we will, I just want to be clear, we will continue to recruit throughout the summer to try to get that 29, assuming that we are going to provide full service for next year. And at some point, if council decides differently, then we have to back that program down, and that's important. It doesn't just happen tomorrow. So that's why we always do this at the end of the school year, so it gives us three months to right-size, prepare everybody, get the information to the school district and whatnot. So I just want council to understand that it is a big program, and if we make a decision in September, that would probably not go into effect until maybe after the Christmas holiday, as an example, or sometime like that. Again, there's educational piece, there's outreach. You don't just bring a crossing guard in and out of a school crossing.
Mayor, I have a question also for Mr. Finley.
Hold on one second, Mr. McNamie.
How quickly do we fill those spots? Do we have vacancies, or are we able to fill the crossing guards?
Hold on one second, Mr. McNamie. Mr. Adam was up first.
Okay.
So Mayor, if I understand you, you're suggesting we separate the methodology from the financing. Is that correct? And we look at the financing during the budget cycle, which, I don't know exactly when that is, but I get that, I can see. I think the main thing is the methodology, because Councilmember Jones has some hesitation about it. We've heard some public speakers, you know, be a little hesitant about losing a guard. So I'm just saying, let's look at the methodology and see how we got there, so then we can make a decision versus, as Tracy said, trying to cherry pick different spots here could land us in a little bit of trouble. But if you want to move the financing to the budget cycle, which is when? When's that?
It's coming up.
We'll be going through our budget hearings next spring.
Oh, not until next spring? How's that sit with you, Kevin?
Doesn't sit very well with me. I think we should be making a decision by September with the idea that CVUSD, you may be taking this on in September, prepare for it in your budget.
So let's, I appreciate that. I'm just going to remind you, let's stick to what's on the agenda. The agenda is whether or not to eliminate these five crosswalks from the crossing guard program. That's what's actually on the agenda tonight. If there is a desire to continue it and have a much more global conversation, that's appropriate. Again, I had recommended that a motion be made to continue the consideration of the elimination of these five crosswalks, and at the same time, ask City Staff to bring back information regarding the threshold policy that was adopted by the City Council and the financing components to it at that time. I believe Mr. Powers has indicated that we can bring it back, you know, in early September. We can certainly try in August, but obviously, by that time, school's in session. And as to Mr. Finley's point, you can't just call the school district up in a week and say, "Here you go, this is theirs to handle." So under any circumstances, if council is not comfortable with eliminating these crosswalks right now, I think that you all have to recognize the fact that there's going to be several months at least of the city continuing to support the crossing guard, crosswalk program.
I think you hit the nail on the head right there. Council is not comfortable eliminating these crosswalks at this time. So it seems to me that we need to continue it, look at the methodology about how this was arrived at, and if we can't change the budget till the spring, I still don't see why we couldn't at least discuss it.
You know, I'm not sure what the motion is on the floor, but I...
I will tell you what the motion is on the floor.
I'd like to make a substitute motion, and my substitute motion, which takes precedence, is that we continue this till the 29th of August. And in the meantime, the staff prepares all the information that we need for both things, whether or not to continue it or give it to the, try to give it back to the School Board. I don't know if they'll do that, but, and also what streets we continue the program on.
So Councilmember Adam, you can either accept a friendly amendment, instead of having it to a date uncertain, have it directed to August 29th, or you can vote on whether to add that to the motion.
I made a substitute motion, Madam.
But he can add it as a friendly amendment, and then you don't have to have two separate votes.
I don't have a problem with the 29th. Can the staff get back to us by the 29th? Is that a realistic...
For clarification, the meeting date would be August 30th.
Thank you, sorry, I thought it was the 29th.
I mean, I get it, Ed, but is that a realistic expectation, staff?
Look, we're going to endeavor to bring it back to you as quickly as we can. I'm going to sit with the staff afterwards. We'll have a dialogue about it. I'm confident that we can probably meet that date. We do have, you know, just to remind the council, we set three... We do have, you know, just to remind the council, we set three-month horizons in terms of items, so we already have items stacking up for that evening. So that's the only note of caution out there is that there's a lot of advanced planning that goes into that. But, you know, that being said, we know council's adopted policy very well, happy to walk you through it again. And if at that point you decide you'd like the traffic commission to weigh in further, you may want to direct it back to traffic commission. And so there's going to be a lot of opportunities out there, but the point being, based on council's action, we're going to remain status quo for the fall.
Well, I think we do need to revisit this thing. As Tracy said, I don't think we're comfortable with it. So Ed, we'll make it ideally the 29th.
Okay. You want the word ideally in the motion?
Oh my God, the 30th, thank you. Preferably the 30th, I get it.
All right.
Again, I understand your motion that we want to have it done around the 30th. I don't know if there's enough time for me to just postpone this to when we have enough time to really address it and bring it forward. At the same time, we're checking into what Councilmember McNamee's concern is at budget time in the spring. This is just extending this out another six, eight months and it gives everybody time to know that what we're up to, what we're looking at and what we're doing. I think giving that amount of horizon to us is a better way to go than trying to cram this in prior to start of school year.
And as a reminder, the council's already adopted the budget that's going this year. Crossing guards are included in that budget, half a million dollars for next fiscal year. So from that standpoint, the budget's settled for this year, that's why we're moving into the next year, budget cycle next spring.
Well, I think if we had a discussion on it on August 30th, it wouldn't be anything we could financially do then, it would be something we'd be talking about in the following spring, correct?
I'd like to call for the question on the motion as it was amended and that takes precedence. We need to take a vote, Mr. Mayor.
There's still discussion going on, in my opinion, and I did have Mr. McNamee with another point he wanted to make.
Mr. Finley, you have crossing guards that you have to coordinate here through the city for the CVUSD school board. How's the staffing going as far as finding people that are willing to be crossing guards?
It continues to be difficult and we currently have six vacancies in that 29. So we will endeavor to continue to recruit and as the school year winds up or starts out again, we will try to have crossing guards at each location as we did this year. If we're unable to get guards to fill those spots, then we will not have guards at certain intersections or certain crosswalks as we did this year for many times this year.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
So whose motion are we voting on, anyway?
I wanted to actually say something as well. So we do have a question.
Again, at this point, Councilmember, or Mayor Protam Jones has called the question.
He has and we need to vote on that.
So you need to vote on it. The vote is whether or not to amend the motion to include the August 30th time to bring an agenda item to city council. Do you add that to Councilmember Adam's motion? That's what you're voting on right now.
Thank you.
Well, it's not whether or not, it's to bring it on the 30th. That's the motion on the floor.
Correct.
You're making a motion to amend his motion.
Well, you told me he was going to accept that as a friendly amendment.
I asked him if he was going to accept it as a friendly amendment.
Well, I think he did, didn't you?
Well, Ed, I accepted it as a best efforts.
Okay, so we know the motion.
August 30th, best efforts. I mean, we do have agenda items already pending.
Let's call that portion of the question, which is to amend the original motion. Madam Clerk?
So the amendment is stating-
To bring it back by the 30th.
Absolutely, August 30th.
Yes.
Just for clarification, I'm sorry. Is the motion to direct staff to bring back information on the policy adopted by council plus financing at the August 30th meeting, is that what we're voting on?
Are you expecting? Yes.
Yeah, I suppose so.
Keep it simple. Yes.
Okay, then we don't need to vote on that.
Exactly.
Okay, very good.
Unfortunately, a no vote would sound like you're voting against the premise versus the date. So we're kind of caught in an awkward situation here.
August 30th is fine if city manager's at, city manager's at August 30th is fine.
Are we going to vote? Or what's going on?
The city clerk is waiting.
Oh.
Are you ready, Ms. Rodriguez?
Councilmember Bill De La Penya? Yes. Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
No.
And that motion carries four to one with Mayor Engler voting no.
We have item, Ot, Oscar.
Oscar, yes.
Oscar, yeah.
Question for city staff. Why are we putting in stop signs? What's the need for it? Could you give more clarification as to why we're actually putting this on the agenda?
Okay, this is, my name is Jim Mashiko, I'm one of the traffic engineers. Basically, these are six T intersections in the city. Currently, none of these locations have a stop sign posted at any of the approaches. And so what we're doing is trying to clarify the rules of the road, the right-of-way rules, and just posting it at the terminating legs of the intersections. As you approach from the terminating legs from some of these approaches, you notice that there's some visual impairments, some landscaping or some corner walls, things like that. So with stop signs, this should improve safety and make sure that everyone's aware of the rules of the road.
Does this take care of all the T intersections that we have in the city in need of stop signs or are there others that may be available?
This just covers the ones that are reported to us. We have a number of other locations in the city that are just like these, that are uncontrolled. But what we do is, over time, as we receive complaints and we investigate them, we install these stop signs. So as others are reported, we'll bring these also to city council for review.
Any estimate as to how many of those are? Because I find it hard to believe that we'd sit there and wait until we have enough accidents where people complain and then now we're going to take action as clear to being proactive and identify all the T intersections because they are a hazard.
I don't think we have a number in terms of how many are out there, but I think over time, we've, you know, we're only bringing this item probably to council maybe once a year. Each time, we bring about six to eight or so, so I think most of the intersections are covered.
Mr. Power, that doesn't sit right with me. We've got perhaps hazardous intersections and as city council is being alerted to this because of complaints. And that to me means a complaint is probably originating because someone got in a car accident. I'd rather be proactive to keep car accidents from happening. Is it worthwhile, council members, to look at this and see what, how many more T intersections we have to address in our city so that way we keep accidents from happening?
So I'll have Public Works Director Finley speak to that. You know, one important thing to note, as Mr. Mashiko mentioned, careful evaluation does go in when these come forward. Many of these intersections, residents have no interest in a stop sign. Stop signs create a different traffic pattern, breaking noise in front of your house and other things. So there's a lot of factors that go in looking at traffic flow, so I'll let Mr. Finley speak to that.
Yeah, just a point of clarification, these intersections don't, we don't become aware of these intersections because of usually accidents. In fact, it's typically just because a resident calls and doesn't feel comfortable with the site distance or making that turn anymore or, anyway. And Mr. Powers stated correctly, we typically only respond when a resident calls, says there is a safety issue or I'm concerned, because if you go in and just start putting in signs, we've found every, every good deed goes, goes the way you think it might not. Yeah, and the reality is, you end up putting a sign in front of somebody's house or near somebody's house and usually they don't appreciate it. So we are very responsive as soon as we get a call. It means that there's a desire to make a change. Change is hard for people and we typically don't make changes unless the neighborhood requests them. So that's been our policy in the past, so therefore we don't go out and just look for things to fix, because if there's not a problem, we don't just look to fix them.
Thank you, Mr. Finley. So the adage, if it isn't broke, don't fix it, is that what we're saying here?
Little bit.
Very good, thank you, sir. Mayor?
Anyone want to make a motion to go for oh?
Yes, I'll make a motion for Oscar. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries five zero.
Next up, we're going to move our item 11 forward a little bit. And that item is our social, our community social service grants recommendations. So with us today is Ann Laffianza along with Sarah Males and Melissa Hurtado. So, good evening, how are you?
Hi, good evening. It's so nice to be here, Mayor Engler and council members. It is my pleasure to be here this evening to present the Community Funding Review Committee's recommendations for the city's fiscal year 2022-23 Community Social Services Grant or The city's Community Social Services Grant Program funding is included in the adopted fiscal year 2022-23 budget. The grant provides $100,000 of annual funding for social service agencies. In order to qualify, applicants must be 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organizations located in or primarily serving the Thousand Oaks community. Qualifying programs must provide a benefit for the community they serve and a wide cross-section of Thousand Oaks residents. The application period was open from March 17th to April 20th, 2022, and the application was available on the city's website. Email notifications were sent to applicants from the previous grant cycles when this grant was formally known as Social Services Endowment Fund. A press release was published and the city utilized social media to notify the community of the grant opportunity. City staff held an application workshop on September 20th, 2021 via Zoom for all nonprofit organizations interested in applying for the grant. The workshop is recorded and remains available on the dedicated Grant Opportunities webpage on the city website. The city received 25 applications with grant requests totaling $234,036.18. CFRC members independently evaluated the applications using predetermined scoring criteria based on requirements in the grant application. On May 19th, 2022, the CFRC met to discuss the collated scores of the applications and unanimously confirmed the recommendation to city council. The CFRC is recommending grant funding in the amount of $100,000 to 24 programs. These in front of you are the 24 programs being recommended for funding. The represented programs meet the criteria of providing public and social services benefiting the community and a wide cross-section of residents. The CFRC recommends that city council award the fiscal year 2022-23 Community Social Services Grants as presented by the committee with a total award of $100,000. This concludes my presentation this evening. And Assistant to the City Manager Melissa Hurtado, Community Services Analyst Sarah Males, and I are all available for your questions.
Slavianza, thank you so much for your hard work on this, so we appreciate you going through all these applications. We do have at least one comment here from Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Ann, thank you for serving on this committee. This is your second or third year, I think?
I was on two terms of the Social Services Committee and then this is my third year with this committee.
Really appreciate that. And you know, I like the way that the committee divvied up that hundred. It's not a lot, but rather than using, and I think I got this right, rather than using the old formula where just maybe the top half dozen would got it, you decided to adopt a different formula, so everybody got a little something. All 24 applicants, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Twenty-four of the 25 got something.
Twenty-four, 25. I think that was a good move. I appreciate that approach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bill De La Penya?
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Thank you, Ms. Laffianza, again, for your work and the committee's work and of course, staffs. I noticed in going down the list that there are some organizations that are needing money for rental assistance and rental assistance is so crucial right now. And I know that more money is needed, so it's not going to happen in this cycle, but in order for us to also be able to keep residents, as we heard tonight, from losing their roof over their heads, that our nonprofit organizations do get money for rental assistance, so, so important, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Very good. Motion?
I'll move the recommended action, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, Mr. Jones? Ms. Rodriguez?
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries five zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Now we have our public hearings coming up, so our first public hearing has to do with a mixed-use project at 325 and 391 Hampshire Road, known as the Kmart site, the former Kmart site. We have Carlos Contreras, our senior planner, making the presentation. Also available for questions is John Duggan, the Community Development Director, Calvin Parker, Hader Nadari, and Patrick Heer as our staff. So please go ahead, sir, and proceed with the presentation. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, mixed-use project at 325 and 391 Hampshire Road, former Kmart site, applicant IMT capital B Hampshire LLC. And speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Twenty-five individuals have presented speaker cards and pursuant to council standards, each speaker will have two minutes and the yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Very good. Now, Mr. Contreras.
Good evening, Mayor, council, members of the public. The project before you tonight is a proposed mixed-use development at 325 and 391 Hampshire Road. Before we proceed to the project details and evaluation, staff would like to go over the recommendation on the project that is before the city council tonight. Staff is recommended that the city council adopt and certify the final EIR and Statement of Overriding Considerations prepared in accordance with SEQA. Staff is also recommended that the city council approve the various entitlements associated with the project, which include a general plan amendment to change the project land use from commercial to commercial residential, zone change from C1 to specific Plan 22, a specific plan with specific development standards for the subject site, a development permit to construct 420-unit mixed-use development, a development agreement specifying project benefits and responsibilities, lot line adjustment to reconfigure two lots of record, and also a protected tree permit to allow the removal and encroachment of protected trees. As far as the project scope, the subject property is 10.97 acres. They are proposing two mixed-use podium-style buildings along Hampshire Road. They include 13 buildings for multifamily residential town home-style apartment buildings. The project includes 420 units, of which 54 would be affordable. The project also includes 15,000 square feet of commercial area and also subterranean parking for the two mixed-use buildings and also surface-level parking for the project. Here is an aerial photograph of the subject site. As shown here, the project site is bounded by Hampshire Road to the east. You have Foothill Drive to the south and to the west. The 101 freeway is located to the north and Thousand Oaks Boulevard beyond that. There are several residential uses located to the south and west and also industrial uses and commercial uses to the north and also to the east across Hampshire Road. As far as existing conditions of the subject site, the site currently contains a commercial shopping center that's been vacant since 2004. The vacant site consists of a 103-square-foot former Kmart building and attached commercial previous in-line tenants, which also includes a 2,600-square-foot drive-through restaurant and also existing surface parking lot, hardscaping and landscaping. Following Kmart's closure in 2004, other commercial uses closed as well, leaving the site neglected since then. closed as well, leaving the site neglected since then. As far as the surrounding land uses, the subject site is surrounded by a mix of, of uses that are, consist of a skilled nursing facility to the northwest, identified there in the blue. You have also the commercial uses to the north identified in the yellow, and you have apartments to the south highlighted in the orange, and you also have a existing childcare facility at the, to the southwest identified here in the green. Here's a view of the subject site, looking at it from Hampshire Road towards the west. As you can see here, the existing Kmart building and parking lot and existing perimeter landscaping at the subject property. And now, a little bit of background. In 2017, the City Council did approve an Economic Development Strategic Plan, which is a long-term vision designed to help the city maintain its financial health and achieve future economic growth. It is important to note that this project's site has been identified as one of the opportunity sites, which is the key property that warrants investment and benefits the city of Thousand Oaks. A little bit more on the background. Since the project was allocated units by the City Council, the applicant team took council staffs and the public comment and recommendations and submitted formal applications beginning in April 2021, and since that time, they provided substantial revisions to the project plans. These revisions include a reduction of the total units from 459 to 420, while increasing the affordable unit count from 41 to 54. These revisions also include an increased fourth-floor setback to reduce the mass and the scale of the mixed-use buildings as seen from Hampshire Road. The applicant team also added seven live-work units to the project, a learning and tutoring room for the children that also reside at the proposed development. As far as the project status and where we are tonight, this here is shown graphically to demonstrate the many steps in the planning review process. The initial step was a pre-screening where the 353 units were allocated at the subject property. Thereafter, the pre-application was submitted to iron out development requirements, and then the applicant came in with the formal development application, and then the project was further refined. Thereafter, staff began the environmental review stage and proceeded with the draft EIR. And then on June 8th of 2022, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to the City Council, and the project is now at the end of this development review process, with the City Council holding a public hearing and taking final action on the proposed development. As far as the project overview, here is the project plan set. This is a proposed site plan for the project. As this, as this site plan demonstrates, you have three points of access off of Hampshire Road, demonstrated here by the green arrows. One point of access leads to the parking garage at Building A. That entrance, that right turn lane into Building A, is exclusively subterranean parking for the residents only. And then, as you go down Hampshire Road towards the other mixed-use building, you have another point of access into the internal main, internal access road. And then beyond that, you have Building B with another point of access to the parking, subterranean parking garage. Again, these subterranean levels of parking are for the residents only, and they provide ingress and egress to the subject property. And then the other point of access you have is off of Foothill Drive to the south. Again, this, this, these points of access provide for internal circulation. The internal access drives are 30 feet wide, and they provide, and then they do bisect through the property. As shown here on the project plan set, you see and identified here in the red is the 15,000 square feet of the commercial component of the mixed-use buildings. And then to the western portion of the property, you have the 13 townhome-style apartment buildings with the, with the proposed pool and the barbecue area at the center of the proposed development. The project also includes outdoor public amenities such as pocket parks, seating areas, gathering spaces, and a dedicated dog park. The public open spaces connected by a system of pathways, passeos, plazas, which provide multiple opportunities for the residents to gather. In addition, the private amenities include rooftop decks, children's play area, a community room, a tutoring room, a community pool, and clubhouse, and also barbecue. These are, these amenities are provided for the residents of the townhome apartments and mixed-use buildings. The concept includes enhanced connectivity, not only within the subject site, but also to surrounding uses nearby, including the open space. As far as the proposed density bonus for the project, this project will designate 15% of the units as affordable within the two mixed-use buildings, which equates to 54 affordable units. By providing the 50 affordable units in the low-income category, the applicant is entitled to 27.5% density bonus, which equals 91 density bonus units for this project. The total count of 420 units is derived from the 329 base units plus the 91 density bonus units. In addition, the applicant has agreed to dedicate four of these affordable units to moderate-income residents. So in terms of regional housing needs and community benefits, the project will add needed housing, both market rate and affordable, to the city of Thousand Oaks. The low-income affordable units include four studios, 26 one-bedroom units, and 22-bedroom units. The moderate-income affordable units include two studio units, two one-bedroom units for the project. These affordable units would be dispersed throughout the both mixed-use buildings. Here you have the proposed unit mix type in the mixed-use buildings, to give you a better idea as to the proposed unit type for the mixed-use development. As shown here, you have 28 studio units, 184 one-bedroom, and 137 two-bedroom units for the mixed-use buildings. On the right-hand side, it demonstrates the interior courtyards within the mixed-use buildings, the proposed balconies on several of the mixed-use units. And then the townhome buildings unit type, you have 22-bedroom units, 32 three-bedroom units, and 19 four-bedroom units. So the proposed project provides a different mixed and unit type for both the mixed-use development and also the townhome buildings at the rear. As far as parking, the subject site provides a total of 802 parking spaces. For the residential component, it's a total 628. The mixed-use development is required to have 486 units, I mean, sorry, 486 parking spaces, and 486 are provided. The townhome apartments require 142 spaces, and 142 spaces are provided within an enclosed two-car garage. The project also includes 55 guest parking spaces, although they are not required to because of the state density bonus law. As far as the commercial component, the project does include 15,000 square feet of commercial. Of the 15,000 square feet of commercial, you have 12,500 square feet for restaurant and 2,500 square feet for retail. So the commercial component is primarily for restaurant use, and based on these commercial uses, the project would require 115 parking spaces, but the applicant is providing 119. As far as the impacts to protected trees, the, the proposed project would include three removals of oak trees. As identified here in the yellow polygons, you have the mixed-use buildings. One oak tree would be removed as a result of proposed Building A. The oak tree is identified in the red circle. And as you move towards the southwestern portion of the property, I identify the townhome building that would result in the impacts to two oak trees. The two oak trees that would be removed are identified there in the red circles. The purple circle on, on the bottom right is the existing sycamore tree that's on the subject property that would be encroached on by some of the hardscaping proposed for the project. The circle to the left of that, the purple dash circle, is the sycamore tree that is located off-site, and also would be encroached on by the proposed hardscaping of the development. Moving down towards the, the northwestern portion of the property, I identify there in the green circle, one of the onsite oak trees that's located on the slope by the retaining wall, which would be encroached on by some of the hardscaping for the proposed passeos. And then you have the green circle, and the green dash circle is also an oak tree that would be encroached on, but that oak tree is off-site. So of the oak trees that are gonna be impacted, again, three are gonna be removals, and then two, sorry, four would be encroachments. It should be noted that the proposed buildings have been cited and road alignments have been designed to minimize impacts to protected trees by limiting construction to the already disturbed areas. Additionally, based on the tree report dated May of 2022, the oak and sycamore tree removals and encroachments are consistent with the intent of the Oak Tree Preservation and Protection Ordinance, since the removals would be replaced by three trees for each one that is removed. Here's an elevation of the proposed development. This, these elevations here demonstrate the mixed-use buildings that are located along Hampshire Road. As shown here, the architecture is contemporary with building materials that include stucco and decorative stone veneer, metal cladding, panels, metal rail guards, and large storefront windows, which are provided at the commercial levels with metal awnings above the windows. The proposed buildings provide a mix in typology while maintaining architectural compatibility with the surrounding buildings in the area. Here's an architectural rendering that demonstrates the mixed-use buildings along Hampshire Road, which incorporate varying wall projections, extensive building articulation, elevated terraces, exterior seating areas, recessed building levels, and courtyards that reduce the massing and the scale of the buildings, which result in a visually interesting and attractive design. The project also provides significant public exterior space, especially within the commercial area and the Long Hampshire Road frontage, which include elevated terraces, rooftop decks, and outdoor seating and dining at the project entrance. On the right side, we have a photo simulation which demonstrates the dog park, which is connected by the various passeos, and encourages pedestrian, pedestrian activity, and provides opportunities for the public to gather. Here's the conceptual landscape plan. The conceptual landscape plan includes, or demonstrates various passeos that are at the perimeter of the subject property, and also within the interior portions that cut between the proposed townhome apartment buildings and the mixed-use buildings. You also have, as I mentioned earlier, a dog park at the southwest portion of the, sorry, the southeast portion of the property, with pocket parks that also line the passeos, which are all demonstrated here. The idea is to provide this connectivity for pedestrians to have not only connectivity within the subject site, but also to provide connectivity to the Los Robles Trail, which is 150 feet to the southwest of the subject property. Staff would like to note that all landscaping and irrigation improvements shall be designed and installed in accordance with the city's guidelines and standards for landscape and planting, and all landscaping shall demonstrate compliance with the State of California Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance. And prior to issuance of any grading permit and building permits, a complete landscape and irrigation plans would be provided by the applicant team reflecting compliance with all imposed conditions of the project entitlements, and will be submitted by, for review and approval by city staff. Here's a cross-section of the proposed development. As demonstrated here, the topography of the site descends approximately 20 feet from Hampshire Road to the rear of the site where the townhome apartment buildings are located. The section demonstrates the podium-style mixed-use building design with the mixed-use buildings above the parking structure. This section also demonstrates the mixed-use buildings facing Hampshire Road, which provide a staggered facade design. Facing Hampshire Road on the first level is the commercial component. The second, third, and fourth levels are for the residential units above. And as shown here, the, the levels above the commercial provide increased setbacks from Hampshire Road. The most prominent setback is that of the fourth floor, which ranges between 34 to 78 feet, and includes rooftop decks overlooking Hampshire Road. The townhome apartment buildings are three stories with an average height not to exceed 35 feet. The proposed mixed-use buildings along Hampshire Road are at four stories with an average height not to exceed 41 feet for Building A and 37 feet for Building B. Here's the roof plan of, of the project, demonstrating here, the, in, in red, the modifications that were done to the fourth floor of the previous design. As is shown here, the setbacks for the fourth floor have been increased, you know, ranging between 30 feet to, to 80 feet, and the setback reduction did result in the loss of eight units on Building A, and also removal of eight units at Building B. As far as the environmental review process, staff did hold a scoping meeting in January of this year, and then we worked towards getting the draft EIR circulated for public review. We did have that draft EIR available for comment between April 11th of this year to May 25th of 2022. It should be noted that the project EIR did include a significant and unavoidable impact that would result from the project due to ambient noise resulting from temporary vibration and construction. A SEQA requires a specific finding that the project includes substantial benefits that outweigh its adverse environmental impact. It is common for cities to approve a project with significant and unavoidable impacts for a project of this size and scope when the project has significant benefits. In this case, the proposed development and the specific plan include revitalization of a neglected commercial center, economic investment, new housing, affordable housing, proximity to work opportunities, proximity to public transit, and various other community benefits. Staff contends that the benefits of this project would outweigh the noise factor, and the Statement of Overriding Considerations should be adopted by the City Council. It should be noted that the Statement of Overriding Considerations is included as part of the final EIR SEQA findings that were provided to the City Council. A development agreement is required for this proposed project. This is a requirement after a project was, has received allocation of Measure E units. This agreement is a contract between the owner and the city to ensure specific deliverables are in place for public benefit, such as the affordable units, the open space, and commercial uses. If the project is approved tonight and construct, and is constructed as planned, the city would have an additional 366 market rate units and 54 affordable units to its residential stock, including the demolition of a neglected commercial site. You have public accessible space, including a dog park, and also a learning tutoring room to be used for after-school studies. In conclusion, staff has found that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan, is consistent with the SP 22 and, and any other applicable city standards and policies. The proposed project is compatible with surrounding land uses. The proposed project has been designed to minimize visual impact to surrounding properties, and the proposed project would not be detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. Staff is recommending that, that the City Council adopt the certified, adopt, sorry, the, staff has recommended the City Council adopt and certify the final EIR in accordance with SEQA, and recommend approval of the subject applications associated to this project based on the findings and subject to the suggested conditions of approval, including the draft resolution and ordinances provided to you. That concludes staff's presentation. I am available for questions, and also we have the project EIR consultant here available for questions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Contreras. Councilmembers, any questions?
I just have, I just have one about the commercial.
About the commercial location? Go, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I just wonder what, I saw the, the total size of 15,000 square feet, and I'm wondering about what size would the actual units be, the retail units, the restaurants, and, and whatever, you know, approximate dimensions of those?
As, as the project is proposed right now, we don't have the actual dimensions of those retail units. We do know that the applicant is proposing as of right now 2,500 square feet for the retail, and then the 12,500 square feet for the commercial. That can vary in, in size, but that is what's, what's been allocated for the proposed commercial components.
Well, I, I saw them as depicted on the drawings, so I presume they're commensurate with the proposed retail uses for them. I guess they're restaurants, are they primarily? Is that right? I saw one as a market, I guess.
Yes, as proposed right now, you'd have 12,500 square feet of restaurant uses. It can be broken up, you know, to three different restaurants, but at the, at the, at the most, as it is proposed right now, would be 12,500 square feet.
Thank you.
Mr. McNamie, first up.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the residents that live in that area behind the complex that's proposed had concerns regarding line of sight. Will the buildings be so tall that they can't see the beautiful Caneo Valley? From what I see on the description of the, or the drafts, is that it seems like the line of sight is not gonna be interrupted. Is that a correct conclusion on my part?
As provided in the project plans, yes. We had the applicant team provide a cross-section demonstrating of the Foothill Drive on the west overlooking the subject site, and there are no views obstructed, but it should be noted that we don't protect views as part of our city's code standards and policies.
I understand that. I'm just looking more for the applicant. The developer here is accommodating the residents, and it's a very- and it's a very kind thing for him, him and her to do for that. I appreciate it. The other is that this was, proposal had a delay for the planning commission because of a CEQA complaint by the carpenters' union. They were, if I remember correctly, concerned about the survivability of some of the trees that were going to be replaced for the ones they removed. And it sort of shocked me that the carpenters' union has now morphed into the Sierra Club. Has, has that issue been addressed? And what is, what was the resolution of that discussion between the carpenters' union and developers to address all those environmental impact report complaints?
Good evening. So first, as to your specific question regarding the oak trees, we do have a oak tree mitigation process. There is a monitoring process. That's not just standard for this project, but it's standard for many projects that we have in our city. So as to ensuring that there's effort taken to, to maintain trees that are replanted, that, that is a condition that they will have to comply with, and so for that issue is taken care of. We, we have received numerous comments initially during the comment period and for the public, and I'm sure you all know this, but for the public, for the EIR, we have a 45-day comment period. And so there's a period of time for everyone to comment, individuals, groups, state agencies, of course, and we have received several of those. On the last day, the day of the May 23 planning commission meeting, we did receive two comments from two different law firms representing labor unions. One is with a group called Safer, and one is with the carpenters' union, for lack of a, to generalize that. And so based upon issues raised in those comments, applicant requested, or as part of that, to continue the matter to June 8th. On June 8th, before that meeting, we received another dump of material from both law firms. One was significant, over 200 pages. The other one was a short letter. And again, nothing changed with the recommendation for the EIR, and nothing's changed today for that recommendation. There is no need to recirculate. There is no need to delay this process in any way. And then, of course, today, hours ago, we have received two additional letters from the same law firms on the same issue. and for that, we are, we are working, again, this is very bad form for anyone to submit something of this nature. One of them is over 200 pages, and one is about 300 pages. So they're very similar to what was represented before, and frankly, most of it is identical from one of the groups for some minor changes. And we're, right now, we are working on doing that. And what I would recommend at this point is let's go through the other questions regarding either the EIR or the, or the project. And then, once we come back to staff for questions after public comments, we will have a, a, a time period where we will respond to the final comments that we received today in the last couple of hours.
To follow up with my question, thank you very much for that excellent explanation. I want the carpenters' union and any of the other participants in the complaints to be happy and satisfied with how we're moving forward with this development. My concern is that every second, of every minute, of every day that a project is delayed by such complaints, valid or not, it drives up the cost of housing. And when I speak to residents here in this community who want to become part of this community, one of the greatest concerns is the cost of housing. And the environmental impact report delay with these complaints and the CEQA drives up the cost of housing. And I just want to know, as a council member, does the parties that we're speaking of have the ability that after this council may approve this project, do they have the ability to come in and delay it again in state court for further complaints driving up the cost of housing?
So CEQA allows for any party, any person, whether they wrote a comment or not, to challenge a final decision. They have to, typically, they have to go through the final decision by this body, which would be the city council tonight, for example, before they would challenge anything in court typically, right? That's the standard. But to be very clear, anyone has a right to, to challenge an environmental document in different ways and go, go to court. It doesn't have to be any of these individuals, for example, that wrote specific letters. They can look at the letters and say, I agree with that, and therefore, I want to challenge it. With that said, the goal that we have, and of course, the goal that we think we've achieved tonight, is to create an EIR that is solid. It is a proper, thorough examination of the environmental impacts on this project, and we believe that has been done. And you're going to hear more from our consultant, who has done a very thorough job in a very timed, timed-compressed manner to address many of these issues that have been raised at the last minute. Again, we, we believe that EIR document is something that should be adopted and certified tonight. We believe it is compliant with state law and legally defensible, of course, and we believe it accurately and thoroughly analyzes this project. And I also want to remind everybody that, again, this is, this is a Kmart site, right? This is something that's been there for two, almost two decades without use, and it's a vacant lot. And I think that's important, too. But again, the environmental document went through many, many factors, of course, and the conclusions are sound. And again, I think at the end of this, after public comments, we're going to have a more thorough, specific analysis for some of the recent last hour, couple of documents that we received, just to make sure that we have it for the record.
Thank you. It's always important to protect the environment, very much in favor of that. We have to balance between development and the environment and the judicious use of our legal system, and like to make sure that the carpenters' union and the other you mentioned have had their questions answered and they're satisfied, so that way we can move forward with the decision here tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Adams. Thank you, Mayor. I just want to talk a little bit about connectivity, and it looks to me that within the project, there's very good connectivity, actually. There's parks, there's paseos, there's a dog park, there's pathways. It looks like the residents will be able to maneuver around on foot, which has always been a goal of this council, to try to get people out of their cars. I'm, I'm interested a little bit in the connectivity with the surrounding area. And as you well know, and I hope the community knows, we just completely redid the Willow Road that runs parallel to the freeway that connects to Hampshire, that's right next to this project. First of all, what, what's going to be the best way for people living in this project to get, to get to Willow Road? Would that be to go around Foothill and enter that way, or, or what?
There's multiple ways you can get to Westlake Boulevard. If they go out in Foothill, the signalized intersection there, they can make a left onto Hampshire and go down to Westlake Boulevard that way. They could also go the back way through the residential area and spill out onto Willow. There's a couple ways of getting there.
So they wouldn't necessarily have to go on Hampshire?
Not necessarily.
Backways? Because what I'm getting at is, I would like to think that people will, in fact, perhaps either bike or walk to the lakes in the Civic Arts Plaza, which has amenities there that these folks could use, like Latin's markets, for example. I think it's about a mile from the, from the project, the lakes. Would you call that walkable?
It would be a healthy walk, yes. It's walkable, though.
Healthy walk? Well, healthy is good.
Yeah, you get down, you get onto Willow Lane, though, it's a, it's a little calmer in that neighborhood. You know, it's a, it's residential streets, so the traffic is slower moving. Now, as was mentioned, we have sidewalks on Willow Lane that have just been improved, and they connect right into the lakes.
Exactly. Willow has now become a connector, and I was, I would think it could be used with this particular project. Now, let's go the other way, heading, what would that be? East towards, I suppose the closest project, shopping center would be Westlake Plaza, which I think that's also about a mile, and of course, that has Vons and Gelson's and restaurants, et cetera. I would think that would be walkable from this project, wouldn't you?
I would think so, yes.
I mean, there's certainly sidewalks, biking.
There's also a bus stop right in the corner there, in front of the gas station on Foothill, that connects right in front of the Westlake Plaza on the opposite side of the street. You can take that. And there's also a return bus stop right in front of that, and stops just across the street from the Kmart site. So there are some public transportation options as well.
Mm-hmm. Good point, yeah. Well, again, I'm just trying to establish there's connectivity with the surrounding area as well. And naturally, you know, we want to keep, try to keep those vehicles miles down as much as possible, and I think there is good, a good case for walkability or bikeability to, in both directions. Point being, Westlake Boulevard, after we redid that, put in some sidewalks, I happen to live in that area, there's people walking up and down there all the time, carrying grocery bags and like from, from the Westlake Plaza, so I would hope to see that from this. Just one other question. How much of this project will be available to the general public? Not necessarily people that live there, but, you know, people from outside could come and use the amenities.
The project includes various open space amenities. The paseos, the pocket parks, and the dog park would also be open to the public. The pool area, the barbecue, and the clubhouse would be, you know, at the central portion of the property would be what is exclusive to the residents on the site. But other than that, everything else would be open to the public.
The retail's open to the public? So we may have people walking into the project as well, possibly? All right, well, that's good to know. That's it for now. Thank you. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. In terms, since we're speaking about walkability and connectivity, the closest elementary school, would that be Cunejo School Elementary? I mean, I imagine that that is the closest one. Westlake would be, is on Petrerro, that's too far. Westlake Hills.
I believe that is the closest one.
It would be the closest one. So I would imagine that children who live there would be attending Cunejo School Elementary, that would be the neighborhood school. It's about, what is it, mile and a half, two miles?
It could be. It's determined by the Caneo Valley Unified School District, so we don't make that determination, but it could be.
And the nearest park would be?
Triumph Canyon.
Triumpho? Or is it El Parque de la Paz? It's probably too far.
Yeah, it'd be Triumph Canyon. Triumph Canyon's just down.
Triumpho, that's about 1.2 miles.
Well, there's a little park right next to where Triumph School was on Even Star. There's a little park.
That's it, right.
That is on, yeah, that is Even Star Park.
That's Triumph Canyon, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That is a small one. That could be a little bit, that is the one. I'm glad that the issues were addressed regarding the reason for the continuance. Were the questions regarding what the park district had, were, were they addressed?
Yes, they were. After we received the initial letter from the CRPD, of course, we reached out to the applicant. Applicant team got together. Communications were wide open with CRPD and applicant's team, and ultimately, they came to understanding. That was documented in subsequent letters shortly after the first one. And the main issue is that it has to do with impact fees, and one way to mitigate park impact fees is to, I mean, park impacts is to pay mitigation fees, and that is something that applicant has agreed to do pursuant to the Quimby Act, and seems like that's been addressed. And there's also a condition specifically for that purpose.
And then my next question would be, in terms of the affordable housing units, will they be managed by the property owner, or say, many mansions, or, and how will the city keep track and certify or audit that the units are going truly to those who meet the requirements?
So, great question. I, I do want to point out that it is, it is significant, at least as part of this city's team, staff team, that when we had the pre-screening on this matter, I think the applicant and staff heard, heard all of you very clearly about possibly lowering the density and adding affordable, and that was done through, for the negotiations. And to that end, when you have affordable, there's a condition, and there's a, it's in the development agreement as well, in which they have to enter into an affordable housing covenant. That, that document is something that is created and entered into by the parties, and then the city is in charge of main, monitoring that every year to ensure that they are complying with the covenants for the affordable component of this project, which is 54 units. And that is done again because there's a 55-year covenant for this, so that's a significant timeframe, but it is monitored in part by city staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have just a couple of questions. In terms of the traffic impact on Hampshire Road, my understanding is that the existing location as a big box retail would have more traffic impact than the proposal? Is that correct?
Based on the proposed mixed-use concept, that would obviously try to keep some retail component and provide a mixed-use design to keep residents to, reduce the vehicle miles traveled. That would be correct, but I'll go ahead and defer to the traffic team to give a little bit more of an explanation as to the traffic impacts on the project.
Thank you, Mr. Hadare. Thank you.
Yes, that statement is correct. The calculated total average daily volume for the, this new total combined project is slightly less than that of the previous, if you add up the Kmart, the fast food, and the other side retail chain that was adjacent to it.
In, in terms of the, the spreading out of those vehicle miles and the, the trips, I should say, typically in a residential, is it more concentrated at certain hours or is it spread out during the day?
Yeah, residential does have a little more on the, the peak typically in terms of concentrated in the morning and the, and in that evening peak hour, although we've seen a lot of these patterns change over the past few years with more flexible schedules and, you know, work from home and other, other factors that are going on. So that's less of a, of a heavy peak than it used to be. We're seeing it kind of more spread throughout the day than it traditionally had been.
I notice it is a shared workspace and then some live-work units there as well?
Yeah, that, that should only serve to help the situation.
One, one other quick question has to do more with, not so much traffic, but with the affordability, affordable units, which I, I see 54 affordable units, which is very laudable for this project, and I thank the developer for that, for that. The question is, in terms of the, of the units, I, I don't recall if we talked about it, but what is the, the split as far as one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom, and the affordable
Can you repeat that question again? Sorry.
What is, what is the split? We have 54 affordable units. What is the split? Are there one-bedroom, two-bedroom, that sort of thing?
As far as the affordable component goes, you have 50 affordable units in the low-income and four in the moderate, and the split that you have for these affordable units are, let me go back to that slide again, give me one quick second, so I can get you that number, if you don't mind, here. So the affordable units are going to be, the four units are going to be studios, 26 are going to be one-bedroom, and 20 would be two-bedrooms for the low-income units. The moderate units would be two-studio units, two-one-bedroom, and that would be proposed for the mixed-use buildings A and B.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have right now with the, I did watch the planning commission the other day, and they asked us about every question under the sun, so I think we've covered quite a bit. Mr. McNamee?
Thank you, Mayor. Question for staff, and I don't know who would take this on. If we have a sinking ship and it's got holes in the hull, and we're putting more holes into it, that's the way I would give the analogy of doing more development, we're running out of water. Now, as you know, my background is a professor of water science at the College of Ventura, train the women and men who go into the water treatment plants. My question is, if we have a water shortage going on that's pretty severe, and I don't see it abating anytime soon, and we don't have any real answers, what staff's thought on how do we address this by putting more housing in here that's going to increase the water demand that's already short?
Yeah, I can initiate some responses to that item. There are certainly competing interests.
There are certainly competing interests. The state has a major push for new housing. And there's a housing crisis, as we discussed earlier today, and some of the other public comments and topics that were discussed. And this type of housing is also in demand for our, our growing biotech sector and other areas. And also, when you talk about the housing prices as they exist today in town, having the, some alternative to being able to live in town without, you know, looking for a large mortgage. So the housing need is there. However, at the same token, as you mentioned, there's a water shortage statewide and region-wide. However, the, this new housing that is being constructed is much more efficient than the housing stock that was built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, which use approximately two times the amount of water that the development of this will use. And I believe the applicant will discuss later some of the special measures their project is going to be undertaking to reuse some of the shower water for landscaping purposes on-site and to try to minimize their environmental impact as, as greatly as possible to improve that situation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. No, oh, one other question. I'm sorry. Ms. Bill De La Peña.
Thank you. My next question would be regarding the traffic. This project will generate a large amount of traffic. And how will that change the level of service at the Hampshire intersection?
Hi, I'm back. The, the level of service currently at a few of the intersections is already, you know, below standard. And we are looking to end particularly at that freeway interchange there. And we're pursuing some, some grant funding for that. And we have made some initial forays into that, hopefully to be able to capture some state funding to be able to move that project forward. Those intersections which are below are not, are already as an existing condition. They're not as a result of this project. And this project is not pushing those into a different category. They're still going to remain in those categories. So that's the, and in addition, the project's contributing significant traffic mitigation fees north of $1 million that is going to help the city to advance some of these improvements at those particular intersections.
Mr. Haddari, what is the level of service currently?
For which intersection would you be?
The Hampshire and the 101 there.
Hampshire and 101. There you go. You got the, you got the chart right there. Yep. Yep, at Hampshire at the 101 interchange and the AM, well, this is the build-out year in the future, right? There's an exist, there's an existing condition one as well. Which is this one. Plus project. Existing on the Hampshire and 101, in the morning, it's a B, but in the afternoon, it's a C and an E, which is, an E is quite bad, the 101 North ramps.
And for the build-out level when it is done?
Right, so with the project, just with the project, those remain the E and the C, so that does not change. And then the build-out, you have to compare the future, which is, I think, the year 2040 with the year, with the project. And those also are consistent. The project does not push those into a different category.
And the morning, the morning level is still a B?
In the build-out, it's a B and a C without the project and a same, yes.
B and a C?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. And the interchange will cost tens of millions of dollars and will take several years to complete, I would imagine.
Yes, the latest estimate is roughly $80 million. With the inflation that changes by the month, probably.
Thank you.
Very good. I think we have no more questions. Let's go to with our presentation by our applicant.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a five-minute break before the presentation?
Very good. Let's take a five-minute break. Give everybody just a chance to stretch their legs.
We are back in session. We are back in session. Everyone, please take their seats. We left it off with the applicant. Applicant will present now. We have 15 minute total. We have quite a few applicant speakers that can speak. What I think I will do that's in the interest of time is just have you introduce yourselves as you speak so we know who's coming up. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor, council members. My name is John Morland. The director of planning with KTGY and I'll be presenting on behalf of IMT Residential with Dwayne Border, the architect. First and foremost, I just want to take this opportunity to thank staff. They've been very helpful throughout this process, informative and very thorough as evidenced in their PowerPoint presentation before you. They took a lot of my thunder. So, just moving forward, a primary goal for this project was really to create a forward-thinking, a village and community for Thousand Oaks. We wanted it to be environmentally friendly, pedestrian-friendly, and also have incorporate multimodal transit bicycles, vehicles, as well as pedestrians. And just to kind of identify, each one of the buildings are going to have 7,500 square feet of commercial space. And we see that as something that could be flexible depending on the needs of the tenant. It could be just one large tenant at 7,500 square feet, or it could be multiple smaller tenants. And would be, would really kind of fit the needs and have that flexibility. In addition to the 420 units that Carlos thoroughly identified as part of his presentation, we will also be including a resident learning center and a co-working area as part of the project. And I do want to point out that the parking on this project is going to be 50, we have 59 surplus spaces, so above and beyond what's currently, what's currently required. And including in that is also loading and ride-share areas that are throughout the project, as well as secured bicycle parking. Carlos mentioned also to the connection to the Los Robles Trail located in the southwestern portion of the site. And also, I do want to mention that the site plan here is also consistent with the adopted preferred land use map as well. And when we, really when we kind of took this project, we got a lot, when this came before as part of the pre-screen application process, we heard a lot of, a lot of great input from council, city staff, as well as the community. And we, the project before you went through a number of different iterations, as well as revisions. And the project before you now, I think, is much more complete and a much more, definitely a better project than what it was before the pre-screen. We reduced the unit count from five, 459 units to 420, increased the number of affordable units from 41 to 54. The building area was reduced by 15,000 square feet. And also, as part of the pre-screen, when it went to council, council member Bill De La Peña, I believe you mentioned about having the articulation and additional offset. We increased that offset from 12 feet to now an average of 50 feet to really kind of have a lot of back and forth to really provide some interesting architecture along Hampshire. And what that allows too is allows for some roof decks and some really nice amenities for the residents. And also to mention with the reduction of the units, this plan still has nine more parking spaces than the pre-screen that went before. So, we're providing more parking with the reduced number of units. And then the robust, more robust co-working hub and council member McNamie also too, we heard, we heard and thought it was a great idea to add the learning center and definitely took that into incorporation into the project. And then just briefly, to kind of go over the community benefits, this site has been vacant for 18 years. We'll be reinvigorating it, really kind of making it, making it green. And speaking about that, 2.85 acres of the site will be as publicly accessible open space, either through the form of a dog park, paseos that go throughout, that connect throughout the project, as well as two pocket parks. They'll be open to the community, not just, not just the residents within this project. And also, there will be underground grounding of power poles and utility poles as well. And the benefits in regards to sustainability, this project will exceed the CalGreen standards, which is pretty much the baseline. We're pursuing LEED Gold certification. All units will have, will be electric, so reducing greenhouse gases by eliminating essentially the gas burning stoves. And with EV parking spaces, there'll be 40 EV charging stations available when the project opens, as well as additional 240 EV-ready spaces. And also, we'll be having some bike charging facilities. And I'll turn it over to Dwayne. He'll talk more about the landscape concept.
Good evening. Dwayne Border, landscape architect with Border Landscape Architects. I'm a resident of Los Angeles. Got to tell you, it's an interesting time to be a landscape architect in Southern California, as I'm sure you all know. But some of the things we're really excited about specifically with this project is it's in a community that really values the natural environment and values this use of the open space from an active perspective and also from a restorative perspective, which is really what our project is about. It's about restoring this site and bringing it not only for the aesthetic and the physical enjoyment and the mental and physical health that is provided by being outdoors, but also from an environmental perspective, taking it back to some of the beauty that we have in the Cano Valley and just the natural landscapes. So, from a sort of a philosophical approach, the idea is to bring this natural system back down into the site. And by doing that, what we're doing is not only making a stronger connection for individuals within their natural environment, but we're again, providing that opportunity for that natural landscape to come up to the more sort of urban edge of the city along Hampshire Road. And with that, what we're going to be doing is really dramatically increasing permeability, getting rid of all the asphalt. We're going to be having significantly more open space, green space. We're going to be using porous paving materials, permeable paving materials, I should say. We are also going to have bioretention areas for stormwater capture. So, the landscape is really a working landscape. It becomes something that's not only beautiful to look at, but it really starts to provide a lot of benefits beyond just kind of the use and the look. Increasing the tree canopy, which we know is incredibly important within the city of Thousand Oaks, creating more shade to reduce heat gain, glare, those types of things that you get in more of urban conditions. And then also offsetting and mitigating some of the natural air pollutants with that increased shade and canopy level. The other thing we're doing that we can see here is, again, that opportunity for a variety of spaces, so that the physical use of the space becomes something that's communal. It becomes something for residents who are here, but also for those surrounding the area to be able to walk and to enjoy and to sit within the landscape that they may not normally have in this area now, given that it's just a large, big box retail site with parking area. The other thing that you'll note here is some of the green areas within the building. So, that's another area where the landscape is really working at this point. We are pursuing a vast amount of green roof. We're providing significantly more planting areas on the podium level for the residential courtyard. So, these are going to be amenity spaces where residents can actually walk out from their units and have a beautiful garden court. Traditional Southern California living is going to be there. And then again, the green roof opportunities we have are again, going to reduce the glare. We're going to reduce urban runoff from stormwater and really try to cool this kind of larger development. So, the landscape is really working on multiple levels. And I'll say the other thing that we're excited about is we were challenged by our client to really push this project in using natives and naturalized landscape, not like what you traditionally find in multifamily mixed-use product that we've seen over the past, you know, 15, 20 years in Los Angeles and Ventura counties. We're really doing something that connects to the site. So, we're using the Ventura County Fire Department and their fuel modification list for plant materials to make sure that we're kind of working within potential future wildfire conditions. We also had the opportunity to tour the Agora Hills location of the Hilton Foundation, which is a LEED Platinum building where they use a lot of stormwater recharge and native landscapes and bioretention areas. And we were able to actually walk with their staff and get their list of plant materials and get their lists of systems that actually have worked there so well over the past decade. Our site engineer and our irrigation designer actually worked on that project as well. So, we have a long, rich kind of tradition and philosophy and approach for this landscape, holistically speaking from a water use and from an aesthetic and experiential standpoint.
And then, thank you, Dwayne. And then just in closing, I'm just going to have some, just show some visualization, some renderings of the project. On the screen right now is a view from Hampshire, from Hampshire Road with the, this was the, the project that was presented at the pre-screen. So, essentially, there's an area in red that's bounded by a red line. And so, that's essentially the massing area that was reduced. And then, this is, this is essentially the project, that proposal that's before you tonight. And we have a couple more views of this. This one is of the main entry. Just want to note the architecture forward and really want to kind of gain excitement to really invite people into the project. And then the massing being reduced. And this is the proposed. And then again, up close, I'm at the main entry of Long Hampshire, reduced massing. Really wanted to try to, when you're on the sidewalk, to eliminate the view of the fourth story. And this is proposed. And then, and then this is internal, the internal north-south street with the mixed-use buildings on the left and the townhomes on the right. And massing reduction along there as well. And I just wanted to, and this is the proposed elevation. I just want to note that even within the community, we have wide paseos and sidewalks really kind of foster pedestrian-friendly environment. This is, this is a rendering of the community building. And here's, here's a central pool with the townhomes, townhomes behind it, just kind of going through quickly on these. This is the north-south, south, the main, the internal street with the mixed-use buildings on the left with the live-work, townhomes on the right, a rendering of the townhomes. And with this view, this really encapsulates the view from Foothill along the southern portion of the site, where you have, where you have the view of the existing, essentially the existing asphalt entry. And the proposed is at the bottom, which is the location of the, of the dog park. And this is a detailed rendering of the dog park. And council member McNamie, you asked about the view from Foothill Road at the, at the west end of the site. This is an existing view at the west end, looking, looking east over the Kmart roof. And also, I do want to point out too, also the overhead utility pole on the right-hand side of the rendering. And then this is, this is the proposed view. The utility pole is, will be undergrounded. And the massing, we really want to keep in line and make sure the views are kept, but still also soften, soften by adding a lot of green in that area.
Would you go back to the one you just did before this? Or I could, yeah.
Yep.
I'd just like to compare the, yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome. And then just a couple of images just about, in closing, about the learning center. We really see the, the learning center as an area for, to help foster community, to, for it to be a place where tutors may be able to come in and help teach students that may live, that would live within, within the area. It will be programmed and dependent on the actual residents that's there. It'll be managed by IMT. And it will, it will essentially evolve as, essentially, it will be evolved and adaptable to the learning needs of the community. And these, these images are also the, the co-working area with a lot of the work from home and the flexible schedule allow, these are some of the concept images that would allow for in-person meetings. If someone had to take a quick conference call and didn't, had too much happening in their, in their apartment, they can go down here and utilize this in a nice, quiet area. And just wanted to close and just say thank you for the opportunity to present. And the entire applicant team is here and available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm sure some of our members have questions. Ms. Bill De La Peña, you were looking this way.
I was. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the presentation. I, I saw on the one slide, you, it says that you are pursuing Gold LEED certification. And I'm wondering what pursuing, does it mean you are going to do it, that maybe you'll reconsider? What does that mean?
It, it means that the goal, pursuing LEED is a very complicated application process and very time-consuming. We're going to be submitting the application for LEED for Gold, but it will be up to the LEED program to determine, have that finalization if, if we meet it. There's usually a number of different variables in terms of construction that, that we're hoping to hit. And it, there is a number of back and forth, and it's a lengthy process.
And I understand with the stormwater capture, gray water is somewhat expensive. Can you just talk a little bit about more how you would be reusing the water on the site?
I'll defer that.
I think we're, we're looking at all different opportunities for capturing stormwater, capturing showers as well. And so, what we're starting with is around the building itself, because that's where we're going to get the most bang for the buck. So, we have a significant number of units around the multi, the mixed-use buildings, both of the larger buildings, and then also potentially some areas along the townhome. So, what we're going to have to do during the engineering is really make sure that we've got that right combination so that, you know, gray water is kind of a newer, it's, the concept is really, you know, sort of old school, but the newer technology. Want to make sure that we get the mix right. And it's probably going to have to be a blended system we'll get into so that you don't have additional salts and those types of things that are going to harm the plant material. So, we're pursuing that and trying to find the best balance for the native plants and also being able to capture as much as we can.
Thank you. And I have another question. The, you say it's going to be all-electric. Does it mean all-electric for the stove or the water? Exactly what does that entail?
It's going to be, the, the units are going to be completely electric.
Completely electric.
Utilities. The only gas that will be in there is, if there's any restaurants, there'll be some, some gas connections for the restaurants.
And the height, the height was a sticking point for me way back when. I think the height was 55 feet. And I was hoping that you would come down, and you did come down. What is the average height now?
The average height, the, the maximum will be...
I can speak for that, John.
Oops. Where did that voice come from?
That voice came from somewhere. Who's speaking?
Sorry about that, council. My name is Antonio Tralee. I'm with the KTGY architect and planner. I can speak for the height. The height, anywhere along the site will not pass an average of 50 feet. That means whether the grade is, you know, at one point, higher or lower throughout any point, around any building, it will not exceed a higher than 50 feet.
So, it is 50 feet. All right. I just, I'm just reconfirming because I heard at the planning commission meeting, 70 feet mentioned. And that must have, that was a mistake, I would imagine.
Yeah. No portion of the building will be over 50 feet.
So, it's 50?
Yes.
Is the average height. Some buildings are higher or...
No, the average is going to be, the average is going to be, the average will be lower.
Antonio just said 50, I thought I heard him say.
Correct. The maximum height will be 50.
Oh, maximum.
At the tallest point, yes.
Okay.
The average height will be much, much lower than that.
And what is the average height?
I believe it's somewhere around 37 feet to 47 and a half.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Not for two different building types, the townhomes and the podium buildings. My apologies.
So, it's going to be 50 feet maximum height with an average somewhat below that in the 40s and 30s.
Very good.
Correct. Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Probably 44 feet.
Thank you. And I have no further questions.
Very good. I think you had my questions pretty much. In terms of, in terms of the, it's going to be all electrical, which is great. I appreciate you taking that input from the Climate Coalition. Is that, that also includes all heating for the, for the units except for the possible use of gas in the restaurant areas, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick, one quick question on the landscaping. Will there be any ornamental turf? Or is it going to be any, any turf at all or strictly turf that's going to be usable?
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that. We're not using any manicured turf. The dog park area, we're planning to do a decomposed granite rather than a turf area. We don't like to use synthetic turf, especially in this area, because it is off-gases and gets too hot. So, we'll do decomposed granite. Not going to have any water features, so there's not going to be any overuse of water in any way. We're, we're going well below the required or the maximum allowed water use from a plant material, plant material perspective. We're using all low and very low plant materials.
And, and the trees that are going to be impacted, we, we're losing three of the oak trees. I did drive by there the other day. One of them doesn't look in particularly good shape. Where, are you going to replace all of those onsite then?
Yes. We're, we're going to replace based upon the mitigation measures. Everything is going to be onsite. There's not going to be any off-site required. We have plenty of room and a number of trees in our plan right now that we feel like will adhere to that mitigation requirement.
Very good. My questions, anybody else with questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Adam with one question.
Just a quick one there. Yeah, in the pre-screening, I had asked that you soften the front along Hampshire, because a lot of people, that's all they're ever going to see as they drive by, you know, what it looks like. And it, and it looks like you've done that significantly. So, now, the height that people will see as they drive down Hampshire will be what?
And just to answer the, the other question too, but that height along Hampshire is going to be approximately along, it will be 41, just slightly over 41 feet.
Okay.
Along Hampshire, mainly because there is a gray differential. So, and also because of the larger retail buildings require kind of like the taller floor. So, it was, it was originally 50 feet. So, essentially, there's a nine-foot height difference between at Hampshire and then the average 50-foot back. And I do want to just kind of add to, to precisely answer council member Bill De La Peña's question, the tallest building, the maximum average height is 41.4 feet.
So, yeah, by dropping that fourth story and recessing it back, you've significantly lowered the height along Hampshire. And the, the massing, I believe is the term that you use. Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Very good, council members. We do have 25, I believe it is, public speakers. If there's no more comments, we'll get to our public speakers. Thank you very much for the presentation, gentlemen. Okay, for our public speakers, we do have 25. I have first up is Herbert Hardy, and he's on video, followed by Clint Foltz.
Herbert is no longer online. So, Clint.
Just, just as a reminder to everybody, if you could state your name and residence. And also, since we have so many people speaking, we're going to be limiting to two minutes so that we can get through everybody in a reasonable time. So, please customize your responses, please. Mr. Hardy was not still online, so I'm going now with Clint Foltz.
All right. I'll do my best to do the two minutes here. My name is Clint Foltz. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and a member of the Canoe Climate Coalition. I nor the Canoe Climate Coalition have a financial interest in this project. We at the Canoe Climate Coalition would like to thank IMT for the multiple meetings to review and discuss sustainable building features for the T.O. Ranch project. The resulting project truly sets the bar for multifamily developments in Thousand Oaks. As a community, we must prepare for a future in which climate change plays a central role. The T.O. Ranch project will be mixed-use and highly walkable, which has the potential to reduce vehicle miles traveled and help cut down on greenhouse gas emissions. This project will benefit the old Kmart site by removing impervious surface and increasing the cover of native and drought-tolerant landscaping. This will in turn create habitat and cover for wildlife, reducing runoff from the site and aid in retention of our precious water. It should be noted that multifamily units have been shown to use 75% less water than single-family dwelling units. The Canoe Climate Coalition applauds this climate-forward LEED and CalGreen certified building project that features all-electric residential units and EV charging stations that are powered in part by rooftop solar panels. This project is significant in that it eliminates climate and health-damaging natural gas infrastructure in favor of a healthier, healthier, climate-safe community development that demonstrates market demand, adoption, and acceptance, along with builder profitability. Studies have shown that the building and market rate units will help with affordability due to supply effect of increasing overall housing stock in California. That being said, Thousand Oaks has a desperate need for low-income units. And we are extremely pleased to see that this project includes 50 affordable units for low-income residents and four, four moderate income households. We support affordable housing and the level of building density that has been shown to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. In fact, higher-density developments like this one have been shown to produce significantly less GHGs compared to lower-density developments. We believe IMT has reached a major milestone in setting the bar in designing electrified, sustainable residential buildings. We look forward to seeing other builders adopting these climate-saving building features.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz.
Thank you very much.
Michael Dutra, next up here. Mr. Dutra.
He is not on.
Michael has checked out. We have Kinsey Flame coming back to us. This Flame.
Can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening again, everyone. I am so excited about T.O. Ranch. Maybe I'm overly excited not to say the old Kmart anymore. I don't know. I own Moms of Canoe Valley, a local... I own Moms of Canoe Valley, a local Facebook group with over 24,000 local members. Daily, we get tons of posts of people looking for apartments, condos, rentals, anything really in the area. There is a real need for housing here. Our district is declining in enrollment. Empty nesters in our area can't downsize because there isn't anything available, leaving a very small amount of homes for new families to move into. Our community deserves to grow and this development is absolutely fabulous. I don't know about you, but like I said, I'm pretty sick of calling it the old Kmart. It's time to stop calling it the old Kmart and it's time to start calling it T.O. Ranch. It's time to stop wondering when something will be done with the site and allowing IMT to start making, making a positive change. IMT has shown they have the same vision of community with the same, with some aspects of the property, including the open spaces available to the public in the tutoring center. My favorite part is probably the tutoring center. That would be available for tutoring and IMT had mentioned PTAs and PFAs and boosters to use. If you have any experience working in these, with these organizations, you can understand that this sounds like a dream come true in the school fundraising arena. A shameless plug, IMT recently donated to Canoe Community Outreach, the only diaper bank in Ventura County. This money will assist us in getting about 20,000 diapers. IMT has shown they are setting down roots by supporting community organizations such as CCO. The property and developers have created a terrific community area to solve our housing needs. I hope you vote yes on this and have a great year.
Thank you, Ms. Flame. Next up is Rebecca Davis on video.
She's not on.
We have lost Ms. Davis. Jackson Piper is on video.
Good evening, members of the City Council, members of the public. My name is Jackson Piper. I live in unincorporated Newbury Park and I'm not in any way financially affiliated with this project. This is the culmination of a long process, as we all know, and although I have some things I would have preferred to see, especially an increased number of affordable units at various levels, which likely would have required greater height, greater density allowed, I still appreciate that this is a very, very good project. I really appreciate that IMT has worked with the community. I appreciate that climate-friendly development practices were, were added to the project and that this will still end up delivering 50 low-income units and four moderate-income units to the community. We have a very severe housing crisis throughout California and especially within cities like Thousand Oaks where the suburban model occupies most of our landscape. This will help add to the, the very much in-needs rental housing stock that typically is only given a small portion of suburban communities' land. I think this is a very good use of the Kmart site. I am very thrilled to see this moving forward and people tend to think of developers and, and property landlords as a negative and in many cases they are. There have been too many documented instances of greed and stuff, but I think that this project could set a, a good precedent for Thousand Oaks for development in our future, sort of a baseline of, you know, a developer working with the community, create a good project and what seems like it's going to be a landlord that really isn't, you know, invested in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. We have Carol Shelton now, also on video. Carol, are you still there? Very good. We hear you now. Great.
Good evening. My name is Carol Shelton. I live in Thousand Oaks. I have spoken to the City Council on many occasions. Tonight, I'm just a mom. I have two boys with developmental disabilities, or ADD, that will need long-term extremely low-income housing. I have data. And our ZIP codes are a total of 513 adults served by our local regional center. Only 95 adults live independently. This does not include the zero-to-18-year-olds. The combined total is closer to 1,200. Less folks with ADD are directly mentioned in plans. They become the last to receive benefit, if ever. So what do the folks in the ADD community want? Well, I know the site does not currently have plans for extremely low-income units. Can this change? Can this applicant ensure that one of our most vulnerable populations has a place to call home? Can you allow for set-asides for those with ADD and in perpetuity? This can be done and it has been done. I'm asking that the needs of those with ADD are considered while this project moves forward. Will the site be the first to provide homes for their peers with ADD in Thousand Oaks? As this applicant develops more properties, please consider the needs of those with ADD and their families. We're counting on you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shelton. We have some more people on video, but in, in interest of some of the people who are here in the room, I will switch to some of the in-house people. Mr. Adam Haverstock is first up, followed by Kyle Rohrbach and Sean Meradian batting third.
Thank you, Mayor Angler and Councilmembers. My name is Adam Haverstock. I am the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Canoe Valley Chamber of Commerce. I'm a resident of Fort Worth, Texas, but I do spend 25% of my time here in Canoe Valley. I'm here to speak in support of the T.O. Ranch project. This project has been endorsed by the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce. This is a high-priority project for the Chamber of Commerce. The City of Thousand Oaks is working to expand the footprint of its biotechnology corridor. The thing is, you can't expand biotech without also expanding housing. They are one and the same. One cannot be done without the other. As you know, this project was approved by a five-to-zero vote by the Planning Commission. This is because of IMT's extensive effort to incorporate changes in this project. These changes came from recommendations from the City Council during the pre-screen review and also from community members during the outreach process. For instance, the proposal from the pre-screen had 459 total units and tonight's project was scaled back to 420. The number of affordable units was increased from 41 units to 54 units. And the fourth-floor setback was increased from an average of 12 feet to an average of 50 feet. That's a lot. Nine additional guest parking spaces were added and a learning and tutoring center was added into the project. Put simply, IMT has bent over backwards to make this a project that the community will enjoy and that the City Council can approve. Please join the Chamber of Commerce in supporting the T.O. Ranch project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. Next up, we have Kyle Rohrbach.
Good evening, Mayor Angler, Councilmembers, City staff. I am Kyle Rohrbach, a longtime resident of Thousand Oaks. By trade, I think a lot of you know, I'm a producer, so I'm constantly assessing the balance between the perfect project and affordability of said project. And in my decade or so of experience, I've come to learn how to recognize a good proposal when it presents itself. And with that said, I recommend that you vote in favor of T.O. Ranch tonight. Too often, we talk about city issues in a vacuum, whether it's housing, environment, traffic, you name it. It's easy to silo out our discussion into a singular topic when the truth is, they all need to be considered in concert with one another. And that is the appeal of this project. At its surface, it's more than 400 units, which is a real-world progress in the effort to provide housing to our community. Beyond that, it comes as no surprise to you all that in the last eight years, the city has built a paltry 33 low-income units. That number is an embarrassment and tonight you have an opportunity to make a dent at rectifying the near decade of inaction on that front, as well as address the reality that we are in a housing and affordability crisis across the board. Next, the all-electric design is critical to reducing our communities' dependence and usage of natural gas, arguably one of the single most important steps we can take towards a climate-friendly future. Housing, affordability, the environment, all of it. And please, please, don't use the very real water crisis with very real causes to feign adversity on this vote. Walking down that road dismisses the real reasons we're in a water crisis that quite evidently are not derived from mixed-use housing. It also dismisses an idea that housing crisis and a water crisis are not mutually exclusive. So tonight, I'm asking that you just look towards the future, where we're a city that continues to pride itself on a thriving community with residents who don't have to stress over their rents every month, with local business owners who have opportunities to realize their dreams in the same communities in which they live, all while modeling how we can do so in a climate-first manner. This is what local control looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rohrbach. Sean Meradian, followed by Danielle Borja.
Good evening, Mayor Angler, Honorable Councilmembers. Sean Meradian, lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks. I'd like to express my gratitude and acknowledge the people that made remarkable projects like the T.O. Ranch a reality this evening. I want to commend IMT and their entire staff of professionals that work with our community stakeholders to bring this project from an overwhelming community support and public benefit standpoint. IMT showed through their outreach and their revisions that they listened to the community needs and a final project that reflects that commitment. Enough can't be said about our city staff and their active leadership to get this project out of its concept phase to near reality. The leadership of our city manager, city attorney, community development department, excuse me, Public Works Department and countless others played a vital role in the significance of delivering this project to this point. I'm also grateful to Councilmembers Al Adams, Bob Angler and Mr. Jones, who voted in favor of giving this project a chance nearly two years ago, demonstrating real courage when some lacked the foresight to give them the credit they deserved. Their vote allowed IMT to go to the drawing board, meet with the community, gather everyone's feedback and come back after two years with this historic project. Thank you for your leadership and your commitment to addressing our housing needs and your foresight. We wouldn't be here tonight if you didn't give this applicant a chance. The list of community stakeholders that support this project goes on and on, like the Parks and Recs Board, the Chamber of Commerce, our biotech partners, the Canoe Climate Coalition, T.O. Livability and the Canoe Valley Advocates for Sensible Planning. Thank you for all their members and their support for this project. Each one spoke in favor in their own words and it was all positive. Lastly, during last night's Planning Commission hearing, Commissioner Busmanan observation that caught my attention. He asked why T.O. Ranch and the Kennedy Wilson Project both have community learning centers? Well, I'm grateful that we have a Councilmember that cares deeply about education and looks for ways to enrich our students' lives. Councilmember McNamee encouraged these applicants to look for ways to enhance child development, after-school learning and provide a safe place for kids to learn where they live. I point this example out as an opportunity for others to rethink the artificial limits that we simplify a mixed-use project as and see that they in fact can be much, much more than housing. Thank you very much for your support and thank you for everyone that made this project possible tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Meradian. Ms. Borja, please step down. Next up after this, we have Jill Haney.
Good evening, Mayor Angler and Councilmembers. Danielle Borja, President/CEO of the Greater Canoe Valley Chamber and Thousand Oaks resident. In addition to our chamber members submitted this evening, we have 19 letters of support from local employers, most of them major employers that provide thousands of jobs in our city. I would like to share some of their comments that I shared with the Planning Commission. Amgen. Amgen supports the community as it continues to grow and we support innovative projects that will make this city a vibrant place for all walks of life from around the world. Capsida. Capsida can better succeed at hiring and bringing top-tier talent to our biotech community if there are affordable, attractive and convenient housing options. Takeda. Takeda has a strong commitment to sustainability and is pleased that IMT has prioritized a variety of green initiatives. Ataro Biotherapeutics. As the Chief People Officer, I know firsthand that the lack of local housing options continues to be a significant challenge to retain and attract highly skilled employees. Hyatt Regency Westlake. Approving this mixed-use development with 54 affordable units on a lot that has been making it for almost two decades would breathe new life and vitality into Thousand Oaks. Westlake Village BioPartners. We urge you to prioritize housing projects like T.O. Ranch that will lead to economic development in the biotech sector, which continues to be one of the city's top 10 goals. Fuji Film. The T.O. Ranch project will help close the gap we have in our region for housing and can have a significant impact on talent attraction. Los Robles Health System. This project meets the needs of our community by offering tiered housing solutions, not just for the healthcare sector, but to retain all professionals that truly desire to stay and work in Canoe Valley rather than losing them to other states that offer them a better quality of life. And from trustee Cindy Goldberg of the Canoe Valley Unified School District, all existing school sites in Canoe Valley have capacity for additional students. We would welcome any additional students that may live in the proposed T.O. Ranch development. Simply put, this project checks all the boxes. Please approve T.O. Ranch.
Thank you, Ms. Borja. Next up, we have Jill Haney, followed by Chris Catalano. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Angler and Councilmembers, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Jill Haney. I have lived in Thousand Oaks since 1959 and I've lived in the area of this project since 1999. I'm also the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Greater Canoe Chamber of Commerce. We're a professional business association with over 800 members in and around Thousand Oaks. I'm speaking in support of the proposal by IMT to construct the T.O. Ranch project at the former Kmart site. And I drive by that site all the time and I'm so excited for it not to be the former Kmart site anymore. Our members are enthusiastic about the development of biotechnology cluster in the Rancho Canoe area. The thing is, in order to continue to grow that area, we need additional housing. The T.O. Ranch project will construct 420 housing units. 54 of them will be designated as affordable units for low-income residents. This project received unanimous 5-0 vote from the Planning Commission to recommend T.O. Ranch for approval. This is because the Planning Commission recognized the extensive effort by IMT to design a project that everyone in our community can be proud of and support. This housing will be among the best places to live in Thousand Oaks. The developer is committed to constructing all-electric buildings and is planning amenities like a dog park and retail to be enjoyed by both residents of T.O. Ranch and those in the surrounding community. The Chamber of Commerce has endorsed this project and we would respectfully request the City Council to approve the project. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Haney. Mr. Catalano.
My name is Chris Catalano. I am a resident who lives on, at 3200 Foothill Drive, so I, I live directly above the development. And myself and my fiancee Jennifer Gordon have been neighbors, living in that townhome directly behind the property for seven years. And we're inclined to look favorably upon the development because it removes the current ice hole of the abandoned Kmart with cracked pavement behind the cyclone fences and barbed wire. Now, we've been, I've been endured, seven years I've been enduring comments like, is there a ghetto in Westlake Village? Because that looks like it. And, and weird theories about what's going on there, like, are they putting in a, is it a CIA black site? Or worse, are they putting in a Home Depot there? But, or worse, are they putting in a Walmart Supercenter there? But that was on April 1st. That was from the same people that told me they were putting a Walmart Supercenter at the Malibu Civic Center. The, the, the point of it is, is that from my kitchen, that picture that you saw of the crooked telephone pole and the rooftops, from my kitchen, that's what I see every day. And as far as I'm concerned, I could handle a 100-foot building to look at instead of that mess there. I think that the, it means that we need to live, we kind of live within earshot of construction. I have no problem with that because there's actually the Little Dreamers preschool there and those kids are basically howling at decibel ranges that are illegal, I'm certain, from like nine in the morning till three in the afternoon. So I, I don't mind spending two years with construction. There's a lot of construction going on there anyways. It's a nice area that's, that's coming up in the world. This means that we'll have to live within earshot of constructions. We'd love to see the project get completed as soon as possible so we can enjoy a beautiful community hub with planned landscape, light retail shopping, fine dining, which is kind of sparse in that neighborhood. Since Jennifer, my fiancee, is disabled, a nearby courtyard with the plan, the planning that we saw there gives her some nice-
Mr. Catalano.
-safe, flat surfaces to walk on.
Mr. Catalano.
It's just a big deal for somebody like that.
Mr. Catalano.
Am I beyond time?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the-
Okay. All right. Well, I had a good time. So I'm, I'm a plus and I'm a neighbor and I'm a 3200 Foothill Drive, number two. Come and talk to me anytime you have any questions, all right?
Very good. Let's go back out to our video people. Thank you, sir.
Bob, can I just say, thank you for coming down, sir.
Yeah.
Your observations, considering your proximity to the project, are very valid.
And we do have a comedy club in town, so.
Thank you for taking the time.
Next up, I think we have Pedro Toscano on video.
On video.
Mr. Toscano.
If we could ask Mr. Toscano to approve the promotion so he could speak or accept the promotion on Zoom.
Mr. Toscano, you have to enter the Zoom promotion. Mr. Toscano, you have to enter the Zoom promotion.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Come on in.
Okay, thank you very much. My name is Pedro Toscano. I'm a union representative with the Local 805. We represent over two thousand members in our local. Nine hundred of them, most of them, live and recreate in the vicinity of this project. And we encourage our members to spend their money in the community to help the economy. I would like to address the applicant. The applicant is requesting that the city certify the Final Environmental Quality Act. The project draft environmental impact report is critically flawed and should be revised and recirculated, among other things. The project's DEIR adds three additional related projects to its related project list, but fails to provide analysts of the project's greenhouse and air quality impacts with the additional projects. The project draft environmental impact report fails to properly evaluate and mitigate project's traffic and transportation impact, given the location of the project. The project fails to properly mitigate the significant noise impact that affects several nearby sensitive receptors, including a nearby preschool. The draft environmental impact reports adopt an improper environmental baseline relating to the likely presence of hazardous substances in the project site. The latest staff report does not respond to the issues raised by the Southwest Regional Council or carpenters' prior letters. The city appears to be attempting to adopt the FEIR without responding to the public comments. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Next up on video is Kat Selm. Ms. Selm.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Kat, and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I just wanted to say that I think IMT is really setting the bar with this project, and they're showing us that it's possible to have an all-electric, mixed-use project with affordable units and other community benefits that actually pencils out. We heard at the last two Planning Commission meetings that several community members and business leaders like the greener features of this and other new multifamily projects that are recently voted on with overwhelming support by Planning Commission. Projects like this are desirable to the community that want safe, healthy, and climate-friendly housing that's built for the next generation of Thousand Oaks residents. That's why we want to once again encourage you, City Council, to push for an all-electric standard in the city of Thousand Oaks for new buildings. It's just the smart choice. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Selm. Next up, we have Edmund Sahakian. Mr. Sahakian. Go ahead, sir. I think you're off mute.
Good evening. My name is Ed Sahakian, and I'd like to speak this evening about the project that's been proposed. I'm a thirty-plus-year resident of Thousand Oaks, currently residing in Newbury Park. Raised from my four kids here, I'm excited about our community and the direction we're taking and the progress that we're taking. I applaud the steps the City Council has taken to really carefully consider this particular project and to move forward with progress in our community. Progress is much needed. As I said, I raised four children in this community, several of whom have moved away, and they'd love to come back to the community. But one of the biggest areas of concern for them is housing. Not just housing to live in an apartment, but housing in a community. And truly, what I see here with what's being built at this particular project is that type of community. This really meets a lot of the needs of our community. First and foremost, if I was going to pick the type of project that I wanted to put in place, this would be it. It's the preferred project because it's got that mixed-use flavor. We've got the ability to have stores. People can work and live at home, less commuting. One of the biggest areas of concern for us is how much traffic we have. Well, if people can work and have stores right by, that's a fantastic way to live. Again, our younger generations aren't looking for the three-bedroom, two-bath house in the community. They're looking to live in a project similar to this. This is an ideal for them. They want to be social. They want to be in community, and that's what this does. So as I look at this particular project, I think it meets quite a few of our needs. One of the biggest things that it does, quite frankly, is, as everybody's been saying tonight, it gets rid of that eyesore. That's a terrible blight on our community. And yeah, it does look like the ghetto. I hate to say it in that manner, but that's just wrong that our community has allowed that to be that way. So again, I applaud the City Council for taking this step to move forward. To me, again, like I said, this is, it checks so many boxes in terms of what our needs are. On top of everything else, it's going to create more jobs.
Your time is up, and thank you for your comments. Next up, we have Caleb Standifar.
Good evening, council members. I am Caleb Standifar, a resident of Thousand Oaks. I saw in the Acorn that the carpenters' union filed complaints about the environmental study tied to the Kmart project. That's a site that's been sitting vacant since 2004, eighteen years. When built, it's going to bring much-needed housing to our city. I wondered why a labor union was interested in the environment. When I read further, the carpenters' union was concerned if eighteen replacement oaks would survive. It did not make sense. Why are carpenters concerned about trees? Do carpenters like trees? Are they tree huggers? It became obvious the union was extorting the developer by delaying the project so there would be more union labor in the construction. We do not need green mail in our city. What the carpenters' union has done is drive up the price of housing by forcing the developer to hire more expensive union labor, or the developer has to pay off the union by contributing to the apprentice education fund. Let's be honest, this is not about the environment, but a way for the carpenters' union to extort the developer. The union made housing more expensive in Thousand Oaks. I say no thank you to the carpenters' union. We do not need this in our city. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have Alex Perez.
He's no longer on Zoom.
Alex is off Zoom now. On video as well, we have Andrew Garl.
He's no longer on Zoom.
They have left. Very good. Amalia Fuentes, also on video.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amalia Bolifuentes. I'm with Lesodri LLP, here on behalf of Supporters Alliance for Environmental Responsibility, a nonprofit with members who live and work in the project area. We believe a revised environmental impact report is necessary in order to adequately analyze the project's potential environmental impacts and to impose all feasible mitigation measures. Noise Consulting Group Wilson Ireg identified several mitigation measures that could help reduce construction noise impacts on the nearby convalescent home and preschool, including a taller sound barrier and onsite sound control at the preschool and convalescent home. And the firm also found that there are measures that could be implemented to reduce vibration impacts, such as updated buffer distances. Environmental Consulting Group SWEAP found that hazards and hazardous materials impacts were not adequately analyzed, and they found that an updated health risk assessment was necessary to estimate health risk impacts associated with air emissions from assessment, cleanup, and trucking activities. And the city additionally failed to provide Prop 65 warnings in association with potential exposure to chemicals, including PCE, on-site. But for these reasons and others mentioned in our comments, we request that the council reject the EIR and direct staff to prepare a revised EIR addressing these impacts and proposing adequate mitigation measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fuentes. Next up online, we have two more people online. Roseanne Witt is next up.
Good evening. My name is Roseanne Witt from TO. I serve as a founding member of the Canoe Climate Coalition. We advocate for all-electric hookups powered by clean energy-generating rooftop solar with EV charging for cars and bikes to cut traffic, congestion, vehicle miles traveled, pollution, construction and operating costs, all while also improving community health, safety, and resilience. Last February, CCC challenged city staff, our city council, and developers seeking to build here to lead on climate-forward, all-electric construction by designing LEED-certified multifamily projects featuring energy efficiency, enhanced permeability, water conservation, and residences equipped with all-electric appliances and EV charging stations powered by rooftop solar, all wrapped in a park-like setting with abundant native trees for enhanced air quality, shade, and evaporatranspiration. In short, we challenged decision-makers to set a new building standard for people-centric, climate-safe living in Thousand Oaks. IMT's Kmart project is not perfect, but their responsive collaborative team has thoughtfully designed a village-like multifamily project that is a giant step closer to the neighborhood-town squares concept the Canoe Climate Coalition envisions. We enthusiastically support TO Ranch, encourage this council to require the same green standards from all new remodels and new development in TO, and we say to other developers, "Build it like that." Please pass the project. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last person online is Manley McNich.
Good evening. My name is Manley McNich, representative for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. And, you know, I hear a lot of talk tonight about all the upgrades and all the environmental-friendly work and everything that's gone into the project. It's all very good. One thing I haven't heard one mention of is the income of the people that are going to be building these projects. And carpenters are worried about environment as much as anyone else, but environment's also the people that live around us and that we live around. And when we, the people that are on this meeting tonight, are paying for the healthcare and supporting the people that are going to build these projects because their wages are so low that they can't afford to move into any of these buildings they're going to be building, we might want to start looking at our fellow man and start trying to lift them up instead of just worrying about if we've got the right plant in the right spot. I'd really like this council to start implementing the requirement for skilled and trained, which is not just because it's a union-trained person. It's a highly more trained person that's capable of making more money, to have a better life, to where they can afford their own healthcare. It's a never-ending cycle. We build these projects. The developers, they make, and the people that own them make money forever off of them. The person that builds it makes that money one time, and they can't afford to even move into one of these apartments. And I don't have any dollars or cents facts to back me up on this, but I'd be willing to bet not one person that's going to be building these projects can afford to live in even the low-income projects on here. So let's start looking at our fellow man and start lifting them up to lift them out of some of this environmental stuff into a better life for themselves. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. That's our last video person. We do have five more people in person, and so we will get to them now. Hallam Maher, and followed by Rick Schrader.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and good evening, council members. I'm Hallam Maher and a resident of Thousand Oaks. I was very unhappy when I read the Acorn article about unions' environmental complaint that delayed the Kmart development. The union does not care about the trees surviving on the property. The delay is the union's deliberate inflection of additional costs on housing development which are passed on to the renters. It is one of the most offensive things about how the unions use California Environmental Quality Act, also known as CEQA. They do not care about the environment. They want more union jobs and will delay a project that makes it, which makes it more costly for the tenant who pays for the expensive union labor. How many housing development projects that were marginally funded had to stop development and not be completed because of this extortion tactic called greenmailing? Not blackmail, but greenmail, because it does under, because it does under the guise of protecting the environment. What carpenters' union has done is a powerful disincentive for a developer considering trying to build a new house. CEQA costs to the developer results in the developer paying unaffordable union wages. CEQA gives building trade unions like the carpenters' union or even Canoe Climate Coalition a powerful incentive to oppose almost any reform to the Californians' building that make, that might make housing development faster and cheaper. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, Mr. Schrader, followed by Shanae Anderson.
Mayor Engler, members of the City Council, members of city staff. I am Rick Schrader, President of Many Mansions. As you know, Many Mansions is a nonprofit affordable housing developer, owner, manager, and service provider headquartered here in Thousand Oaks. We first want to give thanks to the city for all its support of Many Mansions and its ongoing goal to develop more affordable housing in this city as we approach our forty-third year of service to the community. We support the TO Ranch project and the actions sought under its application. The city of Thousand Oaks, as you've heard all night, needs more affordable housing. This project will create fifty-four units of new affordable housing, and that is huge. It's becoming increasingly difficult for Many Mansions and other nonprofits to develop affordable housing in this city. While state and federal funding have increased, these funding sources do not favor suburban cities such as Thousand Oaks, given its high land costs, low densities, and lack of public transportation. Therefore, the city should take advantage of developments of more affordable housing as included in this particular development. And indeed, it's really a sign of progress that one of the selling points of this project is the fact that there's going to be affordable housing. It will save water, to address Councilmember McNamee's point. At least for the affordable housing units, I suspect that it will serve existing people that already live in the city of Thousand Oaks, probably in housing that is not as water-friendly and energy-efficient. So I think the savings will be a net. In closing, we support the proposed project. It will create more housing. It's a beautiful design, and we support. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I hope I got your name correct, Shanae?
You did.
Way to go.
Thank you. Nobody ever gets it right, so I appreciate it. So hello, I am Dr. Shanae Anderson, and I am a clinical psychologist here in private practice in Thousand Oaks. I'm also a lifetime resident of the Canoe Valley, and I currently live in Newbury Park. I want to start by acknowledging and thanking all of you for all the hard work that you do here and to say that I'm speaking to you tonight in strong support of the IMT development on the former Kmart site. I believe a compelling aspect of the proposed development is the Learning Tutor Center that provides a safe place for students to meet with tutors and address school subjects that students are struggling to learn, the subjects that are necessary to be successful in life and that are unfortunately falling through the cracks in the CVUSD. Unfortunately, it appears CVUSD has drifted away from teaching important topics such as reading, writing, arithmetic, science, art, and history, and are now hyper-focused on teaching gender and sexuality instead. Sadly, I am seeing the repercussions of such inappropriate instruction in my practice as a psychologist. For example, a patient of mine has been a recipient of these gender-based teachings, and rather than addressing her psychological disorders, she is convinced that all of her issues are rooted in gender issues. Although she's now living a gender-neutral life, it has not solved any of her problems. And instead, this gender issue has become a red herring that has delayed her healing and has also postponed and complicated her educational goals and schooling. The CVUSD is misguided in their attempts to focus on these issues best addressed by parents and clinicians like myself rather than teaching the basics of education. The IMT Learning Tutoring Center will give parents the choice to get the needed tutoring while CVUSD sorts out its educational priorities. This center will fill a need in our community and our students' future since CVUSD has drifted away from the basics of education. The IMT Development Learning Tutoring Center would help education get back on track. So please vote for the IMT process, or IMT project. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. David Schechter, and then followed by Mr. David Schechter, and then followed by Crystal Evans.
Good evening, council. David Schechter, 25-year resident of Newberry Park. So I'm here to throw some cold water on this project. Not the project itself, but I want to talk about CEQA and the Union. So CEQA was developed ostensibly to protect the environment. Well, guess what? Unions have figured out that CEQA is a way to extort concessions from developers, particularly the Carpenter's Union, but this issue has been studied very extensively. What happens is that under the guise of environmental concerns, which in theory sounds fantastic, what really happens is that the Unions file complaints, which is what happened on this project, as a way to get concessions from developers. Now, we don't know what the ultimate settlement is because we and the council don't find out the ultimate agreement between the developer and the Carpenter's Union. What is it? More expensive labor that then gets passed on to the city and the residents? Is it an apprenticeship program? Is it a pension fund? Is it legal work? We don't know. This is a classic example of smoke and mirrors that benefits the Union. It does not benefit the residents of our city. So it's time to wake up. Enough with this pretty talk about the environment. That is not what's going on. We have seen this time and again where the Unions and the developers settle and then voila, poof, their concerns about the environment are gone. They drop the complaint. So this is a shakedown by the Carpenter's Union, and we need to be smart to it. We need to wake up to it. It has to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then last up, we have, I'm sorry, Crystal Evans. Sorry.
Good evening, Mayor Engler, council members, city staff. Thank you all for being here. My name is Crystal Evans. I'm a resident of Simi Valley, but I'm a local business owner. My company, Canejo Awards, is a small business that's been in the community since the '70s, and we are members of the Chamber of Commerce, and we are in support of this project. As a young professional, I am very affected by the cost of housing in Thousand Oaks and the greater Canejo Valley. Thousand Oaks has a lot of single-family homes but is lacking apartments and condos. Multifamily developments fill an important need in our community. The TO Ranch project is very attractive for young professionals who want to live in the community in which they work. It's beautiful, modern, walkable to Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and environmentally friendly. I love the dog park aspect. As somebody who brings their husky to work, it's within reasonable distance for us, and we would love to see it developed and attained. So I'm asking you, please vote yes on the TO Ranch project and build more housing for young professionals in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. That's our last speaker for the evening. I think we do have some time for responses from our staff. Please go ahead.
Yes, there were a couple of comments regarding the EIR that was prepared for the project. We do have Rincon consultants that would be able to respond to those comments.
So before we go to Rincon, I think it's important that we do lay some groundwork for tonight because we heard a number of comments tonight regarding materials received, the Unions, and CEQA. And I want to make sure it's clear for the record that the city's obligation is to review comments it timely receives on the CEQA document. And we're not going to look at motive necessarily or who it is necessarily. It's important that we look at the comments because that's exactly what the CEQA process is about. It is about analyzing the project on an environmental basis and inviting everybody to look at the project and make comments on it and then respond to those comments. And I will say for the record that our consultant Rincon did an amazing job in the time that it had in some of these situations to analyze the comments that were received. Now with that said, it is also important for the record that the attorney for Safer, which is a union related to a union, and the attorney for the Carpenter's Union, they did respond on May 23rd, the day of the planning commission meeting initially scheduled, with comments. One of them was over 200 pages, it was over 300 pages actually. And based upon that, we worked to make responses to those comments. And Rincon actually went through that entire document for both of them and made comments to them. Next, we have the June 8th meeting in which they again submitted letters for Safer, the law firm of La Zouan Drury. They submitted a one-to-two-page document. And again, the attorney for the Carpenter's Union, they submitted again a about 300-page document. Again, landed in our lap the day of the meeting. The documents, fortunately for us, were almost identical to what they initially submitted. That's important, too, because it's important that we have the time to respond to these things. Rincon thoroughly, and it's in your packet, thoroughly responded to all these documents, and not just from these two law firms. I mean, we had agencies, of course, state agencies responded. They were, of course, timely comments that we received, and we prepared comments to those. Tonight, you heard some comments about, from one person, about the GHD and traffic impacts and noise impacts and improper baseline. I want to ensure the public that those items were carefully analyzed by Rincon, and they are in the packet. They were, again, thoroughly analyzed and reviewed. And if changes were necessary from a state agency or from any of these comments, those changes were actually put into the comments and the responses and made a change to the environmental document. That's the whole process of this. Sometimes people that read these things come up with, "Hey, you didn't analyze this," or "You made a mistake," or something like that. And we find, you know, sometimes we find typos or we find that, "That was a good point. We need to look at that a little bit more thoroughly." And we do that. And we did that in this case. Very clearly, we did that in this case. So we get to today, and today, the law firm for the Carpenter's submitted in this afternoon, again, a very similar letter with a similar attachment. We got it so late that I frankly did not have time to go through the attachment, but it did look exactly like the one that we received on May 23rd and on June 8th. The letter was very similar as well from the Carpenter's Union. Slight differences in both the June 8th and today's letter. Unfortunately, today, we also received very late this afternoon a letter from the other law firm, from La Zouan Drury. And the reason why I say that is because this time, instead of a one- or two-page letter that they submitted, they submitted a 24-page letter with another over 170-page document. So 207 pages total that we received late this afternoon on the EIR. So the struggle we have, of course, is that we cannot properly prepare a response to those comments because these things were received untimely, right? The time that they should have done that was by May 23rd. They did not do that. However, you can receive comments, and we can receive comments today, in fact, on the EIR. It's absolutely appropriate. The issue is that there's a timeline that CEQA requires, and the purpose of that is so you have this dialogue between individuals who are concerned about the environment on the project, and based upon that dialogue, you have this time period in which to respond to them and comment on them and give them information that they want. And many times, of course, they go, "Got it. Thank you for that information on your response. That's what I wanted to understand." Thank you. I appreciate that. Today, with this major document we received from this second law firm, we struggle because we have this new data that they sent in. Now, with that said, and this is where Rincon comes in tonight, and this is what my recommendation is for you tonight, is that in this timeframe, this few hours that we've had since we received this document at about 4:00, Rincon has done their best to look at this latest document because it's newer, it's new from what they initially sent us the first two times. And they have, we prepared comments for you to hear tonight. And I say "hear tonight" because we could not create a record and get it into the submittal in time before the meeting because it's just, it's not fair to you, it's not fair to staff, it's not fair to the public. We can't have that document generated in time. Now, after tonight, that document can be prepared in a formal way for the record, the administrative record, absolutely. But for tonight, my recommendation is that there are four categories, four categories that this law firm mentions in the letter we received late this afternoon. Four different spots that we think merits our consultant to respond to you tonight. And I'm going to have Danielle Griffith from Rincon come up to the podium. I'm going to request that she come up and make these four, again, I'm outlining it, it's four different spots that we've outlined as the issues that they've raised tonight. And the reason I want to do this for you tonight, and I apologize because we're going to read her response, she's going to summarize a comment of these four categories, and then she's going to read the response that she prepared on behalf of the city for the EIR document. She's going to read that into the record so we have a record tonight on this latest dump of material that we received. And before she comes up, if she comes up to the podium, I do want to say that it truly is bad, I use that word today or that phrase today, "bad form" tonight. It's very frustrating that a firm that does a lot of CEQA analysis had this whole opportunity. They participated before the first meeting, they knew about this project, and yet they wait till the 23rd, the first, the last, the day of the meeting, excuse me, and the last day for comments to submit a one-and-a-half-page, two-page document that was really not that significant and not material. And then they again waited until June 8th, the day to do it. And then again, tonight they did it, or today, this afternoon, they did it. And it's frustrating because the whole point of CEQA is to do this dialogue and have this analysis done in a timely way, and this is definitely untimely, but for the sake of creating the record for this project, because we believe the project is good and we are confident that the EIR document is solid. But we're going to have Ms. Griffith come up to the podium, which she will, to the speaker.
Before we have Rincon come up, I just wanted to add a couple comments myself to supplement what Mr. Heer said. Again, just for the record, again, it's important for the council to understand that the original letter, well, the letter by the Carpenter's Union, all three of them, although they're well over 200 pages each, are virtually identical. So the responses to the comments that are set forth in the final EIR, we believe, are still legally adequate, given the limited additional information that are in those additional letters, the late-hit one from this afternoon. With respect to the Safer letter, however, the first letter, which was one to two pages, all it said was, "The draft EIR is inadequate and needs to be recirculated." There was no facts, no basis, nothing in it. And under CEQA, yes, we have to consider environmental impacts, but there is an obligation and a burden on those who comment on it to actually identify what those inadequacies are. Those were not identified. It wasn't until after 3:30 today that we received a document from them that was well over 200 pages that outline environmental impacts. And I want the council to understand, first of all, that the timing of the submission of this letter is utter nonsense. This is a tactic that has been used for years. It is legal to do so, but it is clearly an attempt to try to either delay or derail the project. I also want you to understand that you, as a council, have the authority to give whatever credibility or weight you want to, to these letters, given the late timing of this project. There's been no explanation as to why these letters were, you know, sat on someone's office desk and were delivered today. There's been no explanation when every other state agency and county agency and local agency had the ability to provide their comments in a timely manner. There was a 45-day public comment period, and even after the 45-day public comment period, there's still additional time. There have been over two months of opportunity to submit these comments. So you, as a council, have the ability, as the decision-maker, to decide what level of credibility and what weight you want to give those comments. And I also want to thank Rincon for, while we are not legally obligated to provide responses to these comments, since they were provided well outside the public comment period, Rincon is doing so, and they have been working on it since it was received just before 4:00 PM, and are doing so in order for you to make a decision tonight. At the end of the day, Patrick, as your land use attorney and the applicant's attorney will probably agree with this when they come up for the rebuttal, we are in agreement that none of the issues that are being raised by either of those late-hit 500-page documents necessitate either recirculation of the draft EIR or have any legal implications on the adequacy of the document.
Thank you, Mr. Heer. Are we ready for discussions with our consultant?
Yes, and if you can go up to the podium, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
And I understand you've been burning some fast oil here. Thank you for wading through that document and having an opinion and some discussion on it.
Absolutely. Good evening, commissioners, council members. My name is Danielle Griffith. I'm a Director of Environmental Science and Planning for Rincon Consultants. I have Greg Ainsworth, who is a Biological Resource Director for Rincon, and I have two other directors on the telephone, air quality and GHG director and a noise director, if we have any additional comments after I read into the record. So firstly, I would like to respond to Pedro Toscano's comments on greenhouse gas emissions and air quality cumulative impacts. Our impact analysis in the EIR found that there were actually no impacts to GHG emissions or air quality. Similarly, he made a comment regarding traffic impacts, and we also found, using the report that was prepared by a terrorist and incorporating it into our document, that there was no impacts to vehicle miles traveled. Lastly, Mr. Toscano indicated that there were noise impacts that were not mitigated, and that is not true. We did include mitigation measures for the temporary construction noise impacts that were found in the draft EIR. Also, another appellate comment came in from Amelia Fuentes, and her comments were basically a summary of the Safer letter that we received from this afternoon. So she was concerned about air quality impacts, GHG impacts, hazardous material impacts, and noise impacts. So I would like to respond to the Safer letter, and I would also be responding to Ms. Fuentes' comments as well. So please excuse, this is going to take a little bit of time.
Take as much time as you need.
Okay. Okay. So the first major comment that we received regarding air quality and greenhouse gas emissions from the La Zouan Drury letter that was received this afternoon, June 14th at 3:30, are addressed as below. The first comment stated that there was substantial evidence that the project will have significant indoor air quality impacts from emissions of formaldehyde from construction. Mr. Offerman significantly overestimates the amount of daily formaldehyde exposure from the project and is based on inaccurate assumption that the project's construction materials would not be code-compliant with California Composite Wood Products Regulation, California CWP Regulation, or U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Toxic Substance Control Act Title IV Regulations. Formaldehyde in wood products is regulated by the California Code of Regulations Title 17, Sections 93120 through 93120.12.1. The purpose of the airborne toxic control measures is to reduce formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products and finished goods that contain composite wood products and are sold, offered for sale, and supplied, used, or manufactured for sale in California. All manufacturers of hardwood, plywood, particle board, and medium-density fiberboard products must comply with the emissions requirements of CCR Section 9312.2A, as tested in accordance with ASTM-E1333. Thus, all wood products and finished goods used during construction of buildings in the state of California would be compliant with the emission standards as promulgated in the CCRs. Formaldehyde, which can be found in wood products, generally contains the highest concentration when products are new, and such concentrations gradually decrease with age. Neither the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District nor the city of Thousand Oaks provides significant thresholds for indoor air quality. However, the California CWP Regulation is one of the most stringent regulations in effect to limit formaldehyde emissions from composite wood products. The project would also be required to comply with all applicable city, state, and federal requirements pertaining to the use of indoor building materials. As the project will be built to the 2019 version of Title 24 standards and will include MERV filtration systems rating from MERV 13 to MERV 16, evidence demonstrates that compliance with the applicable regulations and air with the applicable regulations and air filter related conditions of approval will be effective in reducing indoor formaldehyde concentrations to levels that are acceptable to carb for the protection of pelvic health. The second comment regarding air quality was that the EIR's brief mention of health risks from the project's construction and operation is insufficient and not supported by substantial evidence. The comment also provides six items to represent the unsubstantiated nature of changes made to Calimod defaults, including unsubstantiated reductions to architectural and area coating emissions, unsubstantiated changes to individual construction phase lengths, unsubstantiated reductions to haul trip lengths, underestimated number of Saturday and Sunday operational vehicle trips, unsubstantiated changes to wastewater treatment system percentages, and incorrect application of Tier 4 final and cleaner engine mitigation. The response is changing Calimod defaults is appropriate when specific information is available regarding project-specific conditions, and the changes are imposed through enforceable project design features and/or conditions of approval. Defaults are not that standard, but rather are inputs when there are more specific information about the project or site conditions is available. With respect to numbers one, architectural coatings, and six, Tier 4 construction equipment above, they're also included as project design features as outlined on Page 4.2-14 of the draft EIR and are fully enforceable. With respect to number two and three of the comments above, they are based on project design and applicant-provided information. Using the more project-specific related inputs provides a more accurate analysis of project impacts than using Calimod defaults. The Calimod defaults applied by the commenter would significantly overstate to more appropriately mitigate project impacts and would result in misleading and inaccurate EIR conclusions if required. However, due to the design features, no mitigation measures are required. With respect to number four, trip generation was aligned with the chip generation table provided in the traffic analysis, and therefore is project-specific information supported by expert analysis traffic and represents air quality information, which is, which is substantial, substantial evidence. With respect to number five, the changes to the wastewater treatment system percentages are in alignment with the practice of the Hill Canyon Treatment Plant Facility and the fact that the project would not have a septic system on-site. As septic systems would not be used at the project, and the Calimod inputs that inform the EIR analysis and impact conclusions is more accurate for the Calimod default. As with prior inputs, applying inaccurate defaults would significantly overstate and skew project impacts. The next commenter states, the commenter states that EIR fails to disclose significant greenhouse gas emissions. And the response is, the basis for this comment and assertion that significant emissions were not reported is in the revisions to Calimod to use only the default settings. As discussed in her comment two above, the use of project-specific information rather than the Calimod defaults provides a more accurate impact analysis by considering the project design and then provides more accurate operational assumptions. The fourth comment, where the commenter states the EIR does not include feasible mitigation measures to reduce the project's greenhouse gas emissions. Response is, the analysis included in the EIR shows that the project did not result in significant impact-related greenhouse gas emissions, thus including, thus including mitigation measures is not required. The project includes multiple design features and conditions of approval that reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Further, responses one and two above show that the project was not inappropriately analyzed. The project defines significance findings based on compliance with GHG reduction plans and policies to reduce GHG emissions, which, in the absence of an adopted numerical threshold, is not applicable and appropriate result, and applicable inappropriate threshold. As the DIR concludes, based on substantial evidence, the project would result in less than significant impacts due to consistency with GHG rejection plans, policies such as SCAGS 2020, RTPSES, and no mitigation is required imposed. The commenter also incorrectly suggests that the statement overriding considerations must be adopted for alleged GHG impacts. As GHG impacts are less than significant, no statement of overriding considerations is required to be adopted. The only significant unavoidable impact in the DIR that requires a statement of overriding considerations is construction noise. Secondly, there were comments regarding hazardous materials, which were provided in part that SWAP identified the project site, which includes an automotive center with underground tanks, haul hydraulic lifts, and clarifier, as well as dry cleaning business. SWAP points out that the investigations conducted in 2021 and 2022 uncovered evidence of a subsurface release of chlorinated chemical commonly associated with dry cleaning, including elevated levels of PCE benzene, ethylbenzene, and vinyl chloride, and soil vapors above residential and commercial industrial screening levels. Our response in part is, the commenter has pointed to Page 4.8.19 through 4.8-21, which provides extensive mitigation measures the applicant would be required to comply with concerning hazards and hazardous materials handling and transportation. Further, the applicant would not be able to break ground on the project until all of the requirements, including permits from the appropriate regulatory agencies are met, including coordination with VCEHD. Oh, oh, there's more. Specifically mitigation measure hazards one, which requires the applicant to coordinate with the appropriate regulatory agencies before any permits are issued, and all of this site contamination will be required to be mitigated and remediated as appropriate. This, in particular, the lead agency imposed a number of other protective measures requiring regulatory oversight of the project site by the appropriate subject matter expert regulatory agency, which would ensure that all proper remediation occurs prior to grading or construction on the property. The project would also be required to prepare a soil management plan prior to construction activities and install a sub-slab protective vapor barrier, which would adequately prevent soil gas vapors from migrating into the future residential project. With the mitigation, with the imposition of these mitigation measures, mitigation measures hazard, impacts to hazards would be less than significant. Lastly, in, in response to the noise comments that we received from this last late letter, after reviewing the comment letter provided by SWAP, mitigation measures NOI I-1 will be revised as follows, as suggested by the commenter. The height of the noise barrier will be revised from 12 feet to 20 feet, specifically at the convalescent hospital location and the daycare facilities, but not along the Hill Boulevard. A pre-construction meeting with the neighboring users, including preschool and convalescent homes, shall be held, including the establishment of a construction notification schedule. An annoyance monitoring plan will be developed to retain a qualified acoustical consultant to monitor project noise construction and report any exceedances of noise thresholds. If exceedances are found, the consultant will recommend additional measures to reduce project construction noise to the degree feasible. The other mitigation measures that were recommended by the commenter are either duplicative of measures already mandated by mitigation measure noise one, as identified in the draft EIR, or are unenforceable and infeasible, such as requiring offsite upgrades and improvements on the property not controlled or owned by the applicant. With the imposition of the above referenced mitigation measure changes, all feasible attenuation measures have been imposed to reduce the severity on the projects, of the project's significant and unavoidable construction noise impact to the maximum extent possible. As identified in the draft EIR, construction vibration impacts related to both building damage and human annoyance would be reduced to levels of less than significant through mitigation measure noise two, NOI two, which would impose setback distances required prior notice and limit the hours of operation of vibratory power drivers and heavy construction equipment such as bulldozers. Further mitigation is therefore not necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your efforts this afternoon. We can tell that you put some effort behind your, your thoughts there. So thank you very much.
And again, for the record, although she was reading these comments, they will actually be a part of the formal administrative record on this project.
So, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that. Thank you for your patience, both for you and for the public on having us go through that process. And I think that summarizes the employee responses, staff responses. Thank you.
And that was a very good discussion on the late, late letter that we received. Thank you. Okay. We have some information that we can get from our applicant. Any rebuttal time for our applicant? If you have some more words to say, please come down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Dave Rand with the Law from Rand, Pastor &amp; Nelson, representing the applicant IMT this evening. I want to start by thanking your city staff and your consultant profusely for going above and beyond the call of duty in order to get you a completely solid record and respond to things that were coming in literally at the last minute. It's truly a Herculean effort, and the applicant team completely appreciates it. I just, I won't do that, I can't do that, but I just want to add a couple extra punctuating points with respect to comments submitted by Lizelle Drury on behalf of SAFER, Lyuna the Laborers, as well as Mitchell Tsai, the attorney for the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Four points were raised, as Ms. Griffith noted, and I just want to add a couple of extra thoughts to each one. First, with respect to Lizelle Drury's arguments that the project will somehow create a formaldehyde impact, you should know that this is a common argument and theme that is raised all over the state by this particular law firm, irrespective of the project, its conditions, its location, its city. The reality is there is law, state law, that will bind this project, as well as others, that must be complied with, that will address potential impacts associated with formaldehyde. What the attorney who submitted the letter did not note, neither did their consultant who made the formaldehyde arguments, is that this project will have higher level of air filtration imposed on it, and that is a result of extensive dialogue and back and forth between your staff, consultants, and the Ventura County Air District. So more protective filtration systems will be included in this project that will even further reduce the formaldehyde, potential formaldehyde impacts beyond what would normally occur in, in compliance with, with state law. With respect to air quality, the Lizelle Drury argument boils down to this. Air quality impacts are, exist that weren't disclosed in the EIR because the consultant had the temerity to adjust the default modeling assumptions under the Calimod air quality program to actually be consistent with the project and its project description. And I'll highlight two points. First, they argue that Tier 4 construction equipment, which is the highest, cleanest, most efficient type of construction equipment, which is binding on this project, shouldn't have been assumed, and so that spiked the air quality impacts. So they're actually dumbing down the standards to increase the air quality impacts, even though the project is being held to a much higher efficient standard. They also suggested that we should not have tweaked the assumptions to note that there won't be any septic tanks on this project. Of course, there won't be septic tanks. There's sewer systems. So that's completely inappropriate and has no bearing on this particular project. Their numbers produced by their consultant SWAP are highly inaccurate and have no bearing or connection to this actual project. With respect to hazards, an extensive Phase I and Phase II environmental report was produced that disclosed the history of this site, which does include some contaminants. And I have to say, perhaps the most extensive battery of mitigation measures were imposed by the city and the consultant to ensure that there would be no health hazards associated with this project. In addition to a soil management plan, vapor barriers that need to be imposed, the project has to submit to oversight to the Ventura County Environmental Health Division to then go through an extensive review process to, for potential health impacts, what remediation is required, and the potential to refer the site to DTSC or the water board, should they deem that appropriate. That goes beyond, way beyond, your typical type of environmental mitigation. So you have the most protective requirements in place to prevent hazard impacts. Noise, the EIR includes a battery of construction noise mitigation measures, including sound walls, consultation with neighbors, and what you heard from Ms. Griffith is that, in response to the letter, even more mitigation measures are being imposed to strengthen the noise barrier and, and go even beyond the existing requirements to show that the applicant will work with the neighbors to avoid construction impacts. Lastly, greenhouse gas emissions. This is an infill, mixed-income, mixed-use project replacing a Kmart. There is no way this project has a significant unavoidable greenhouse gas emission impact. That's an irresponsible allegation. And I should point out that that allegation was made based on an EIR that concluded no impacts, that, that did not actually account for the all-electric commitment that the applicant made later, working with your staff in the development agreement. There were no impacts before, there are certainly no impacts now, that we have an all-electric residential unit project through the work with the Canaho Climate Coalition and, and your city staff. Thank you for indulging me, appreciate the time, and that's it.
Could I ask him one question?
Sure.
What was that you said about sound wall? You're going to have to have a sound wall?
Yeah, we will, we'll have sound barriers fronting the sensitive receptors to attenuate the construction noise sound.
What are the sensitive receptors?
The Little Dreamers School, the, the Senior Convalescent Home, and one of the multifamily buildings.
And these, these are going to be temporary, just during the construction period, correct?
Correct, correct.
You have to have sound walls so carpenters can pound nails, is that it?
They do provide some construction noise attenuation benefit, and so, but they are temporary, as is that impact, of course, goes away when the project is completed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, please, since this came at the last minute, I want to give as much time as necessary for our applicant to rebut some of the things. Do we have any other questions for our applicant? Especially in terms of this late, late dropping protest. Okay, very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Bill DeLaPeña, for your question.
Thank you. The question is for the applicant, not sure who will be the one to answer. I didn't expect CVUSD to be mentioned for this project tonight, and so this learning center, is that going to be used where outside tutors will be coming in? Is it for private? Is it for families who live there and have their own tutor? Or how does that work? I mean, I don't understand why CVUSD was mentioned tonight.
I'm going to have the IMT residential speak to that point.
Thank you for the question. Learning centers for the residents, bring in their own tutors, or parents, or students who want to have a quiet place to go down and work, so it won't be open to the public to come inside the learning center, just for the residents and for their own tutors to come inside?
Were you, does that surprise you to hear that comment from one of the speakers about the school?
Yeah, I was surprised about the comment. So this was a great, you know, as, as we heard feedback from the community and council, we added these features to the project and to better the project. And we found over time, when you open up and you hear the comments, you get a lot of great feedback, and this is one of the great feedbacks that we received, and it's a great for the residents of the community.
Okay, so it will be for the families who live there and not for outside families or tutors, or they have their own. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. McNamee?
Two comments. One is that I've always had great admiration for those who become attorneys, who grunted through law school, passed the bar, successful in practice. And I have to say, Danielle from Rincon, you've taken it to a higher level with your explanation in response to the objections. Thank you. I hold you in very high esteem for what you just did. Thank you very much. The second, to clarify, Councilmember Claudia DeLaPeña's inquiry regarding the student tutoring learning center, is that, again, if you look at the people who are in federal and state prison, 70% to 80% of them are illiterate. I hold the opinion, and many others do, that if you want to reduce crime, get children reading by the age of five. They will not drop out of school by the time they're in fourth grade, join gangs, do crime, and wind up in federal prison. Education's a passion of mine. My father taught at UCLA as a computer science professor for 28 years, saw a number of doctorate students come through the house to have meetings with my dad as they went to get their doctorate degree. I've taught for some 25 years throughout the United States, most recently at Ventura College in the Water Science Department. Education's an invitation to be more, and if you want to change a society, get to the parents to help the kids become educated, learn how to learn, develop that passion for learning that opens up opportunities. What I see in our school district is that when the Acorn has an article where children of color... of color, meaning African-American or Hispanics, are getting DNF grades, the back of my, the hair on the back of my head goes up. And it's not because the parents don't love them, it's because of opportunity to learn how to learn. And I thought this would be a great distributed method, that the developments that come into our city, whether it be IMT, or Kennedy Wilson, or the one across from Amgen, or other ones that are in potential development right now, that we put in tutoring learning centers for not only the residents there, and I hope IMT will consider opening it up to also outside the community, that tutors can come in and help students in our community in a safe environment. That means the religious schools, private schools, and public schools, and the homeschool children. That, to me, is a turning point in our community if we can get these tutoring centers up and going, distributed throughout the city. So the idea, again, of a tutoring center is not foreign. I've been told that Sacramento actually has similar model that has been very successful in their city. Why not bring this to Thousand Oaks? So CVUSD is not doing a good job, based on what I'm reading in the local newspaper. As I talk to parents, they're not happy with the education model they're getting at CVUSD. Parents are flocking away from public education, going into homeschooling, religious education, and private schools. So we need to provide resources for our students who are struggling. We also have on the flip side, where do these tutors come from? Well, let's put some things together here. We have Cal Lutheran University, Mort Park College, Cal State Channel Islands, which have Department of Education. These are future teachers. They need teaching opportunities to get in front of students, to teach them.
Tell something, McNamee.
I'll be done in just a second. Give me another minute.
Thank you.
Very passionate about this, my friend.
I understand, but we have a lot to do.
I got you, I got you, my friend. So my point being is that now we bring in the students from these various universities to be tutors. They get their teaching requirements out of the way, they earn some money, they learn the nature of business, and they help students who 20 years from now will benefit from it. So to answer your question, Ms. Bilden Peña, that's why I approached, and I'm very happy IMT embraced the concept, as well as other developers have done the same. And with that, I yield back, Mayor.
Thank you. No other questions, I'm assuming, let's, since we're starting to get into comments, let's close the public hearing so that we can now have some council discussion on the proposition before us. Mr. Adams?
All right, thank you, Mayor. Well, it's hard to believe, it's been 18 years since Kmart closed their doors on that site, and it's been quite an odyssey to get where we are tonight, quite an odyssey. We went through the whole Home Depot business, which in hindsight now, actually, I personally feel that this is much better, much better than a big box and all the park, or the traffic problems that come with it, much more benefit to the community. And then we kind of went into the wilderness for a number of years, we had a lot of projects in front of us, but none of them really panned out, until IMT came along and saw the value of this property and what it could do for the community, and bought it, and here we are tonight. And we got through the pre-screen by the skin of our teeth, and there was some community opposition, this was two years ago, community opposition to this project. But it's interesting to say, two years later, 19 people tonight were in favor of the project. None were opposed. Complete change from where we were two years ago. The carpentry union were opposed, but I'm talking about our regular citizens, regular citizens. Anyway, what I think, what might be happening in this, I'm trying to look at the big picture of what's happening here in Thousand Oaks. You know, for a long time, some of the feelings in town were kind of fear-based, you know, oh, there's going to be massive overdevelopment in the city, there's going to be rampant growth, and I think anybody can see that over the last 40 years, as long as I've been here, that just hasn't happened, that just hasn't happened. And I think this fear is being replaced by very valid concerns about the direction that this city needs to go. Very valid concerns, concerns like the fact that we have a lack of housing, concerns that we have a lack of affordable housing, concerns that we have a decreasing population. We peaked out at 130,000 people, our latest numbers came in at 125. We've lost 5,000 people in the last few years, and many of them have been young people, exodus out of the city. Concerns about our school population, students dropping from 22,000 to 16,000. You know, these are red flags in our community, these are red flags. Concern about supporting our businesses, as Danielle said, our biotech hub, which is massively in favor of things like this. So I think this is good, this is good. I think people are starting to take a shift in attitudes about where the city needs to go, and T.O. Ranch is right at the crux of that, right at the crux of that. I think it solves a lot of the problems that we are facing now and will face in the future. And I must say, you really have, since the pre-screen, answered all the objections, maybe not objections, but suggestions, that's what a pre-screen is supposed to do. You lowered the number of units, you increased the number of affordable units, you fixed the facade out front, really, really did a good job there. And this project fits right in to what the community has been saying they want, they want building along our 101 corridor, which runs from approximately Lakeview Canyon Road and Westlake Village out to Wendy. It's about a 10-mile stretch. They don't want to see building in the open space, they don't want to see building in the neighborhoods, and this is exactly where T.O. Ranch is, it's in that 101 corridor. We're blessed to have the 101 corridor to be able to build in, and we're doing some things on Thousand Oaks Boulevard as well. So T.O. Ranch fits right into that, and I'm just happy this project has come along, I really, I think it's a turning point in the history of the city. And I don't mean to be, you get too dramatic here, but it's a very important project, and I can finally answer the perennial question that I have gotten ever since I was a planning commissioner, what's happening at the Kmart site? We finally have an answer tonight, and I appreciate the work that's gone into this, and I'm prepared to make a motion that we approve the project, and that would be 8A and all the staff recommendations contained here therein. Do I have to read them all?
No, we'll have, we have people for that.
We have people, okay, well, and we have a person from Rincon that's enabled to fill us in on that. Anyway, it's recommendation one and two.
Thank you for the motion. Next up is
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Jones, please.
Jones, that's right, Jones. You know, I feel, I don't know what the right word is, but in many ways, responsible for this hearing here tonight, Al will remember when he was mayor, after, I don't know if it was two or three minutes of silence, there was an awkward silence, and I finally came to the rescue and gave a third vote, so we, that's why we're here tonight, so.
That's absolutely true.
So good or bad, I was part of this coming. Anyway, I would like to compliment the developer. I remember I asked for five or six things, you know, I said, this third vote is contingent on, you know, A, B, C, D, E, and so forth. I asked to reduce the height of the buildings, and the developer's done that. I asked to increase setbacks, he's done that. I asked to reduce the number of units, that's been done. I wanted more affordable units, he's done that. And I think he's made a small contribution, if I understand it, to the improving the on-and-off ramps at the freeway and Hampshire Road. I'm not sure about the amount of that, but that was another thing I asked for. There was one thing I did ask for that hasn't been done, and I was asking if some of these units could be townhouses or condos where the person could buy it and get a stake in, you know, in owning real estate at some point in his life. That wasn't done, but you know, five out of six isn't bad. I had some questions about the retail, but I think that has been answered. I won't prolong this. I would like to say that I'm happy that I helped facilitate this getting here tonight. I think it's a wonderful project. I'm sick of 18 years of driving by the old Kmart, because I go by there a lot. So without adding any more, I completely approve of the motion. Thank you.
Ms. Bilden Peña, have any comments or discussion?
Sure, why not? Picking up on Mr. Jones's comment that he's responsible that we're here tonight, that is true, but we could also be here tonight, even if the vote had been different two-plus years ago, simply by going back and making changes and then, you know, coming back before City Council. I have to say that there was a level of uncertainty as to, which is why I voted the way I did back in 20, what was it, 2020? Because there have been instances where we had a pre-screen and applicants promised to make changes, and those changes didn't come, and with the one pre-screen or one of a couple where I was so excited about it, it turned into a huge disappointment for me last November, a huge disappointment. You have checked all the boxes, as was mentioned by Mr. Jones, when I was, when I shared my concern about the building height at 55 feet or 50 feet, and I really wanted you to come down, and you did. The setback was also a concern, you fixed that. The number of units also has come down, and the number of affordable units has gone up. I mean, ideally, it would have been 15% or more, but you know, we will take what we can get. And I have to say, your flexibility and your willingness to listen to the residents, to make changes, and to really be open to feedback, made a huge difference in this particular project. You have proven, unlike another developer, that you can go all-electric with affordable units, and you don't have to be 70 feet high. And you are really the first biggest density project applicant that has proven that you can take care of the environment, and that things can be done in a way that other developers would say can't happen. You did it on your own dime, you didn't get anything given to you by the taxpayers, you purchased that parcel for $37 million, you did it. And that, to me, says a lot about how much you care about the community rather than waiting for a handout from the taxpayers. So I have to say, I am mightily impressed that you were able to address every concern. Yes, we will have traffic, it's inevitable, but I hope that other developers will follow your lead, I really do. The fact that you, some of you are local, it shows. You were not counting three votes. Would have been easier for you to just figure out, do I have three votes on the council, like other developers? You didn't do that. You wanted really the support of everybody, and you wanted the residents to be comfortable with your project. That means a lot, and so I will gladly approve this project.
Thank you, Ms. Bilden Peña. Mr. McNamee, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor. The developer IMT has been very, very, very terrific to work with in this project. They've listened to the community, they've listened to council members. This project is very well thought out. It's also a quality project that's very necessary to stop the Kmart project or the Kmart site of, from 2004 until now, that has basically been a blight here on the city. This is a wonderful answer for that 10 acres. Justin Link, who's our traffic, or I'm sorry, our planning commissioner, who's an expert in traffic, when I spoke with him about this project, he shared that his expertise in traffic indicates that there will be fewer trips because of the layout of this particular project. So you can have self-contained people walk to the various stores they need within this project. You've created basically a city within a city through your terrific planning, and my compliments to the architect, the design, and the team that brought this together. You have a learning tutoring center, which I indicated before, which will change lives, not only for your future teachers, but the students that participate in that tutoring center to become more, because education always is an invitation to be more. You're concerned about the residents above who would lose their mountain view if you had buildings that were too high. You'd listen to them. You lowered the height of the building so they still could enjoy the Cano Valley while achieving your goal. You are a sustainable building, you're looking for the Leeds Gold certification, I applaud your effort on that and wish you the best and hope you do get it. You put in electric vehicle chargers to help address the needs of the future for electric vehicles as become more online. Your water reuse for gray water to water the landscape, tremendous idea. Porous stone, so that way it goes into the soil to the aquifers. You've widened the sidewalks to create an open field, let us see the blue skies instead of being in a cavernous kind of situation. My applaud, I applaud you guys for what you did, terrific project, and you've got my full support on it, and wish you Godspeed in getting it completed. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. McNamee, and I think there is a bandwagon coming through the building here, I think I'll jump on it. First off, before I get to my comments, I want to applaud the system that put this all in place. Often, we get criticism on our, on our pre-planning and our pre-screening and that whole system that takes some time to do, but this is a perfect example of how that system comes up with a better project than what was originally presented. It is a way that we have been able to create, as was pointed out, a community of people who now can live in our city. My compliments to IMT, the entire team. What you've been able to do is raise the bar on development in Thousand Oaks with this one project that you're bringing forward. I don't know how, we need to clone you for all the other projects coming forward, because I think they should all take a page out of your playbook. You have really raised the bar on how well you have listened to the community, listened to the council, listened to the planning commission. This is the way a developer really gets buy-in from the public, and this, everybody is going to look at this project as the gold standard for Thousand Oaks. Thank you for that. My other compliment I want to throw to is our staff. Our staff took information and comments from us, and with our, with our high 30,000-foot view of what we thought we would like to see, they were able to go to the IMT, they were able to go to IMT, work out all the details so that this project will come forward. Unlike some of my colleagues who check boxes, I try to do a scale and try to figure out on all these types of things that we're looking at here, how it all comes together. So we do have about five or six things that we're approving tonight. One of them is, is this general plan compliant? We went through the general, the land use element of the general plan, this is the type of project that we desired at this location. That box is checked. We need to do a zone change and a specific plan that really optimizes this location. Box checked. The development agreement with all of the details that were The development agreement with all of the details that were hammered out over this past year, it's, it's a development agreement we all can be proud of. The, the tree permit, the protected tree permit. Yes, we are going to have to replace some trees, but our, but our applicant is more than happy to do that. These are all of the things that I think we are able to look at and, and appreciate. Another thing we need to look at tonight is our, to finalize the environmental impact report. I, I try not to ascribe motive to anybody's actions without having sat down and actually discussed it with them. So I don't know what the motive was to have this last second, literally last second document that arrived on our doorstep. However, and my compliments 100% for having, for Danielle having gone through this document and come to us with an analysis that addressed all of the parts of it adequately and to my satisfaction. So thank you for that. So the EIR portion, I think we can finalize tonight. With that, the balance sheet, yes, we will have some noise during the construction. Yes, we will have traffic. Yes, we will have a building that's larger than sometimes we're used to around in Thousand Oaks. However, all the other things are on the positive. We have the tree replacement, we have groundwater charging, we have gray water use, all-electric to help us with our GHT. It's got wired Wi-Fi. We have, it's, it's overparked, it's more parking places than is required. Many of those parking places will be pre-wired for electric charging and we do have electric charging coming in. It's a LEED Gold building that, well, we'll get LEED Gold. I'm sure once we get it all approved and built, we'll achieve that. Cal Green, live-work units, a shared workspace like a WeWork, the tutoring center that is there. All of that is a great building. And on, on top of that, the Quimby fees, that'll be helping our Wreckin' Parks and school fees, that'll help our schools. All of this on the positive side of the ledger. My compliments to IMT, my compliments to staff for bringing this fine project to us. Thank you very much and I would call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor, I think you ought to be a developer's representative in your later years.
If, if all developers were as good as this developer, it would be a pleasure.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Angler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0 and I do have two ordinance titles to read into the record. An ordinance adopting specific plan number 22, 325, and 391 Hampshire Road and its associated general plan amendment and authorizing the land uses and development standards in said specific plan. The applicant is IMT capital V Hampshire LLC. And an ordinance approving a development agreement, 325 and 391 Hampshire Road, applicant IMT capital V Hampshire LLC.
Thank you. That concludes this hearing on that. Now we have the more difficult hearing that we need to do. This is the Landscape and Lighting District Assessment levies. Please go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B Landscape and Lighting Assessment District number 79-2 annual levy and at this time, Mayor, we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you, and I think we have speaking for us tonight and explaining this is Ryan Roman, our financial analyst, and Nader Hadari, Nadia Benali, and Tracy Friedel also available for questions.
Good evening, Mayor Angler and council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present to you this evening. As you mentioned, we also have Nadia Benali from our, from Web Municipal Finance available via Zoom in case there are any questions.
I believe we're losing our quorum. Mayor?
Oh.
I'll, I'll hold off for now.
Hold one second. Just give us about 30 seconds to get everyone out of the chambers.
Councilmember McNamee, we're losing our quorum.
All right, Nadia, go ahead.
Well, we have the quality people still here.
We have, still have a quorum. Mr. McNamee, please, if you can return, we can continue.
Thank you. So the, the city's Landscape and Lighting District provides funding for ongoing maintenance and utility costs for landscaping and lighting throughout Thousand Oaks. The Landscape District is apportioned into 39 zones in the city and the Lighting District is divided into six zones. The extent of the landscaping zones are shown in this graphic on this slide here in blue. Through an agreement with Ventura County Auditor Controller approved at the May 24th council meeting, the costs for lighting and landscape zones are assessed upon properties via the property tax roll as described in the final engineer's report included in your packet this evening. Listed in this slide are some of the many benefits residents receive from the assessments collected in the Landscape District. Aesthetics of green space and driver awareness to reduce accidents. Additional benefits that are not included on the slide include drainage and lighting systems as well as weed and graffiti abatements. Similarly on this slide, some benefits of lighting assessments. One theme on both of these slides that you'll notice is increased driver awareness and resident safety. In accordance with the district formation documents in the final engineer's report, assessment rates for all but four zones in the Landscape District will be adjusted this year by the inflationary consumer price index, or CPI of 7.51%. And the annual increase for all lighting zones is 7.51% as well. Average landscape assessment rates are proposed to increase by $23.59 or roughly $2 per month for the average resident. Note that the maximum rates generally apply to regions of the city with many landscape medians, parkways, street trees, and weed abatement. Lighting assessments are proposed to increase $1.26 per year from the last fiscal year, reflecting the approved CPI rate. Some future challenges, Landscape and Lighting Districts continue to face challenges with escalating utility rates and contract maintenance costs. In addition, Public Works is beginning to allocate funding towards landscape rehabilitation projects focused on reduced water consumption as well as using smart irrigation controllers. And lighting district revenues continue to lag behind expenses. The recommendations before you this evening are listed in the staff report and to conduct the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the final engineer's report, and ordering annual levy of assessments. And with that, staff are available for any questions that you may have.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, you're first up.
Yes, are we going to do away with any grass in the medians throughout the city?
I'll let Nadia address that.
Good evening, Councilmember Jones. The, that's a multi-pronged solution, but yes, we have already ceased irrigating the turf in the medians. In fact, that was done several years ago under Governor Brown's previous order. And in addition, more recently, we've begun doing other areas such as the monument sign at Lennon Hillcrest and the Day Labor site and including the, the front lawn out here at City Hall. The ultimate re-landscaping and re-imagining of those areas is a, is still a pending item as right now is not the time to be really planting a lot of new material.
Yeah, I agree. We do, we do water the trees though, don't we, in the medians?
Correct. In most of those medians, the irrigation has been capped in the turf areas but has been maintained for the, the tree. Or if it's not available via irrigation, we've had to come up with other means or hand-water those trees to keep them alive.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McNamee?
Thank you, sir. I've noticed some of the turf that has been removed has been replaced with rocks. Is that going to be the continued trend on how to address turf or other more native plants going to be put in place that may not need as much water or no water at all? What's the strategy right now?
Yeah, it's kind of a combination. The council adopted a forestry master plan just a couple of years ago, which outlines the recommended plant palette for each zone of the city in the three or four different zones, you know, one for West Lake area, one for Dos Ventos and Central Thousand Oaks and so forth. So that's really the guiding principle, but that includes, it's not overly prescriptive. There's a variety of, of recommended plantings in there. They're all follow the model water landscape ordinance and the drought tolerant, but rock scape is included. We, we built some of that on Willow Lane as well as on North Moor Park Road. So we've been experimenting with that to see if that's suitable as, as a solution, as a hardscape slash landscape solution.
Any issues with perhaps the stone, the rock that's used getting into the wastewater system and causing plugs, slowing of the flow and so forth?
No, our, our storm drain system, the, the smallest pipe size diameter is 18 inches and usually they're much larger than that. So we have not seen that and, and the way they're installed typically they're recessed and so forth, so that we haven't been encountering any of those in the, in the drainage system.
I'm not looking for the diameter of the pipe, I'm looking at, you know, two or three pounds worth of stone building up, creating a dam within the piping system as the stones accumulate over time. That's, that's the direction I was looking.
Yeah, the ones typically that are installed have not, are either they're larger or they're set in such a fashion that they don't migrate off and don't move around.
Very good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Very good. We do not have any public speakers unless we don't want in the last minute or two. Very good, so I will close this hearing.
I move the recommended action, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion to, to adopt a recommended action. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Bilda Le Penya?
I was only going to vote yes.
Very good. Well, I don't see any other comments, so go ahead, Ms. Rodriguez.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Angler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Mr. Mayor, I watched the planning commission meeting. They all vote aye, the planning commission.
We, we need to teach them a few things.
Oh, I, I think they can teach us.
Very good. I think we're down to city manager comments tonight, so let's see if Mr. Powers has any words of wisdom to leave us with.
Just that our next meeting will be two weeks from tonight, 28th of June. We'll have a public hearing on the One Baxter Way project from Kennedy Wilson. We'll have the proposed municipal code amendment relating to cannabis coming back to council. It was heard by planning commission last night. And we'll be having our public hearing, annual public hearing on delinquent wastewater charges that night as well. That's two weeks from tonight on the 28th. Busy weekend around town with the touch a truck event at Thousand Oaks High School. It's first time post-COVID. So that'll be there. Canoe Valley Days will be going on and, and I think there's a Juneteenth celebration at Canoe Creek Park as well. So a lot of activities in town this weekend, plenty for folks to do. Also have our pop-up arts and music festival. If you haven't had an opportunity to go out and attend one of those yet, they're doing an outdoor movie night as one of the events this weekend, so check out our website for more details on that. That concludes my update.
Mr. Powers, I just wanted to say these pop-up events are being, are very well attended. They're really gaining in popularity, so yes.
Yes, I will, I will be there. Very good. That's all we have on our business, but we do have a closed session and I'll turn it over to Ms. Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one item, conference with legal counsel on anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to government code section 549, 56.9D4.
Thank you. So at that point, I will call this meeting to, for adjournment and we'll retire for our closed session.
Oh, Tracy, were you gonna? Okay.
Oh, you, you did have something to conduct?
I have.